All right, Mary. We're here a little bit late, but we're with the undersheriff on a jail update about employees and inmates and some upgrades that were previously started but then stopped, huh? And door fobs that are installed, discussion of jail security scans with smartphones.
Yeah, so we'll start with the jail update. Employees, we've hired two detention officers since the last time we've talked. Kevin Lowry from the mill, and he's here now, and another gal out of Chicago that has retired PD, and then, so they're in the jail learning, picking up fairly quickly. So taking some pressure off our staff in the jails. We had door fobs put in on the sheriff's entrance here and on the back door. One makes the key. So you just hold it up there.
And that records the employee and the time?
Right. Because we just, we've had this, we have no idea who has keys to that door. So sort of waiting around, we didn't want anybody coming in the back way that need to be here.
Hey, ready?
So, what else do we have on here?
Did D I S do that?
Yes, yep. And then, I think what he wanted to discuss with the, he wanted to revisit putting in the scanners by all the doors, so when our staff does security checks, they typically hold the phone. It's like a smartphone. You hold it up to the deal that marks.
Prove that they did a jail check.
Right, so when you do med pass and dinners, feeding times, ID checks, cell checks, all that stuff, it's all documented.
Is this something he's proposing to do with his CARES money?
Yes, we talked, we visited with you guys about it before, about three or four months ago, and Lowry wanted to wait and make sure we kept the jail open a little bit longer. So I think we're, I think that's what he wants to do is revisit it. So of course, we'll have to put it on the agenda for.
Is that something the D I S would be doing also?
Uh, yes. They could install that for, I would imagine. I'm not, I didn't find that project, that's been the sheriff's deal, so, but I believe so. It's just, it basically comes down to just, they're magnetized sensors.
Yeah.
And then, they also, each inmate will have a band, so you can scan the band, scan where you're at, to record all this stuff. And it keeps it, oh, I didn't know what I missed. Bob Fister said to say hello.
Oh.
He was shocked that you hadn't told us that he did the work in there. We didn't know there was any work done in there prior to us being here.
You talking about the electronic doors that were 25 years old?
The panels, when he replaced the panel, and so there were some things in that project that didn't get all the way completed, nothing major outlets that weren't connected. And the biggest part is, is just putting a second screen back by the detention officers so they can see the cameras, because the only screen in there is dispatch. And so what we proposed with both Bobs is that they're going to submit a bid to us to come in to work for a day, to come in and crawl through everything, see where they left off. They want to get rid of that second panel, you know, where the first one was. That was all left pretty much unfinished.
Do you guys remember, did we have that halted because the jail was closed, or with a COVID or what?
That's what he was saying, it was when the jail closed.
Yeah, they were in the process of finishing that.
And they ran out of money and time and everything else, everything, this kind of.
But right now, everything's operational, it's just some of these cleanup things.
Right, and training for the staff. He said that the system will do great things for you guys, and he just knew how to do it. Like, for me, one of the concerns has been no interlocks. I just couldn't believe there weren't interlocks on the doors, so two doors couldn't be opened at the same time. It's just a little button on the screen, click it, and so I put overrides back on all the locks, so you get one door at a time, so you don't have two open and no access. So just little stuff like that. So they'll submit their bid, and we'll bring it to you and let us know, and then they'll, you know, they, they wanted to do cameras on that last project too. It was never approved to do it, but I guess it was talked about, and we've talked to you about putting new, modern digital cameras, because everything we have back there right now is analog, and this would fit, the system is built to take all those cameras. The nice part is it's networked, so we want to put a monitor in the sheriff's office so he can see what's going on in my office, and you can put them anywhere and access them. So you can also connect them to the door, so if you open the door, camera comes on, so you can see what's going, the interaction between detention officers and inmates. So that's the update on that. So once we have their bid, we'll come back in front of you guys and let you know what it's going to cost and go down that rabbit hole when the time gets here. And then again, we'll just, I'll give it to you probably Monday, and we'll put the smartphone on, and he'll make a presentation to you again, showing you what he'll do, that money we have sitting in the CARES Act fund, so I think he wants to execute that.
Maybe get a printout from Cal A and ask how much is left in there so that we have.
Yeah, to my knowledge, I think the only thing that we've spent out of there is the 911 system. I don't think we've spent any more money out of there.
Right, but I, just to see what the balance is.
Yeah, yeah, not a problem. We'll bring all that in front of you when we put it on the agenda for next week.
Okay.
All righty, I think that covered everything that's on your.
Yeah? How many inmates are in there now?
We have 20, 22, 11 of which are.
Paying.
U.S. Marshals.
11 U.S. Marshals.
And I think there's three or four state.
DOC.
Uh-huh, and adult probation.
Uh-huh.
So we have seven available bunks for our local folks.
How many of our locals are in there currently, approximately?
They don't stay long, you know, usually we'll do an arrest and then they'll get seen and released.
Yeah.
So I don't think we have anybody local in there right now. So, but we did get a payment from U.S. Marshals last, yesterday, $6,000 for the month of April.
Uh-huh.
Another six from the state, so it's coming in finally.
Yeah.
So we're still running down, we weren't able to locate any payments from when we opened to when we signed the contract from the U.S. Marshals, so we're running that down now, so that should be showing up soon. And we had, one of the marshals in yesterday, he's happy with everything that's going on, and so, life's good right now.
Yeah.
So, but today's young, today's day.
Yeah.
All righty, guys, anything else I can help you with?
Anybody have any questions for the undersheriff? All right.
All righty, I'll go back to my office.
So on the agenda today, we have a policy, the amendment to the work policy in our Mineral County Policy Manual, teleworking, remote work. I guess we addressed it before with, under the FMLA law that allows certain instances of approval for that, if somebody's taking care of their sick child or sick loved one, but it needed clarification on, in general, since the COVID-19 thing came, and many counties just let everybody close the courthouse doors and leave and do things from home now that we have the vaccine and we have a year and a half under our belt, we decided that we wanted to make clear that teleworking and remote work be specifically addressed in the policy so there was not any confusion. And did you help draft it, or Lowry, or what's our verbiage?
That verbiage did before was it was just telework, remote working may only be granted with the prior approval of the commissioners. So you'd have to get approval from us to be able to work from home.
Well, we are basically a public service, customer service group here. People come to the courthouse for help, and an employee kind of has to be here in order to do that, so, and I suppose if there is a unique circumstance that can be brought before us, and we can certainly consider it, but as a general rule, Mineral County Policy 2.0 states that remote policy and telework can be granted only upon urgent circumstances as brought forth and deemed appropriate by the commissioners to follow approval. So if not for the department director head, they'd have to bring it before us, and we'd have to consider the situation. Otherwise, people are expected to be at the workplace. Okay. So that's what the motion, or on the agenda is considering to change or add, actually never was changed, but I guess we need to add it so there wasn't confusion. So that's the topic, yes.
Is Ellen on the phone?
She's not. She was aware of the meeting, and she said we could call her. She definitely wants called in for the next meeting, but she was good.
Okay. I was just curious if that was, if she was there. So I think the question still is, we still have quarantine, and we still have that kind of thing. Are you all available? Somebody says, "I've got to be home for my kiddo," starting tomorrow.
Well, it's always been in the policy handbook that quarantined is sick leave. It's, that's stated in the policy, and it's been in there since day one. Quarantine is considered sick leave.
Okay, I thought there was something, didn't we go over that with, like, Melanie with regards to she's home with a sick kid, but she's still able to work remotely?
That's, that's under, that falls under FMLA.
If they qualify for that FMLA act to do that, then that's what we discussed in the other meeting, and somehow that, that unique circumstance of the FMLA allowance got bled over to people believing it could just be done.
Whenever.
Yeah, at their discretion of their department director head and be done when they felt, so we, we would find out that somebody wasn't at work, and then somebody'd say, "Oh, well, they're just working remotely." Well, I don't think the public, most of the public doesn't get to do that, and they didn't appreciate coming here for assistance for whatever reason, and finding out the person was being paid, but they weren't at work, they were. So we're just trying to clarify it. The FMLA thing, like you described, there's an allowance and there's criteria for that, and then today, we're just adding in the policy manual so there's no confusion that any other instances of somebody needing to not be at present at work, but maybe they have to do some work from home, it just needs to be kind of authorized, prior approve, approval depending on the situation.
Gotcha.
Because some people were going home and doing a full 40 hours a week. Well, how can you do a full 40-hour week at home?
Taking care of a sick kid, and you're supposed to be sick, and you don't. And I think it was, there was some abuse there.
We're just trying to, yeah, we don't want the abuse to happen, but we certainly want to still be flexible, given the unique situation of whatever might arise, but just to have it be. Many counties didn't know what to do two years ago. Everybody thought you were going to die just by touching, you know, a metal doorknob somewhere, and now, now things have gotten ironed out, and so we kind of have a return to work, hopefully back to normalcy, and we, and now that we understand the virus better and what can be done, and we just want to make sure that people know there still is an opportunity if it's a dire situation, but it's not like it was two years ago where people didn't show up for work. So that's why this is on the agenda, and.
Is that the 1.6? Is that what?
1.6.
Oh, how come I was?
That was last week.
I don't know what that was.
Oh.
That was the page.
Where's the one today?
It's just up here.
Oh, okay.
I don't know what that.
Yeah, so I better stand corrected it.
Yes, I was going to ask.
The policy is 1.6. Yeah, telework, remote working may only be granted with prior approval of the commissioners, amending work policy, page 5, number 1.6.
I'm sorry about that.
Yep, well, I didn't know. A number is a number.
And I gave it to you, so I'm sorry.
Any other questions, or?
Well, I'll make a motion that we approve teleworking, remote work policy amendment 1.6, remote telework may only be granted with prior approval of the commissioners.
I'll second that.
Motion, a second. Any other questions or discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, none opposed, so, okay. So now, we'll adjourn until 10 o'clock, Board of Health meeting.
Well, 10 o'clock, and I'll call the Board of Health meeting for November 19th to order. First item on the agenda is minute review. Minutes, I would entertain a motion to approve them.
I'll make a motion to approve the minutes until like 30.
Have a second?
I'll second it.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to approve the minutes. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Unfinished business, none, it says. And then it's time for public comment. Have any public comment? No public comment. Okay, and then on to new business. Request for variance, wastewater treatment system permit denial, Andy Short, environmental health and planning, Jason and Laurie Green, DeBorgia, Montana.
So what we have before us is a variance request for a setback from a drain field to the 100-year floodplain. But before I get into it too far, I would just assume that Ron and the Greens would be here. Candace, is there a chance that they're not aware that this meeting's going on?
It'd be.
I'm just trying to think, we've just had so much going on, and I'm trying to think if, I mean, it was in the, it was presented in the paper, I just can't imagine them missing this.
Do you want me to go call?
Um, yeah, just, just to check in, see if they know it was happening.
The phone's available if they want a teleconference too, Candace, nobody?
Uh, but regardless, we can, so many agenda, we'll kind of go through it. Obviously, a decision doesn't have to be made if they're not here, and we can, we can talk about it. So the, I'll pull up the maps and kind of show you guys the property there. Just take, this always takes a bit to load. So this will be the first time, I've brought, almost three years that I would have brought a variance before the board, so I don't know, like, you guys know, I don't know how you've handled these in the past, so if you've got any questions, feel free, we'll explore, we'll kind of explore it all, yeah, to talk about it. It is, local boards of health are, from my research, able to grant variances based on Montana code. There's very specific criteria for granting that variance, and we'll kind of go through those. But I'll first pull this up and show you what property we're talking about here. It's kind of, I think there's been two septic permits in the past that were kind of contentious in this area.
Hey, Ellen, I don't have you on speaker yet. Can I go? I'm sorry.
You're fine, you're fine.
Okay. I'm going to put Ellen on speaker now, I'm sorry.
Sorry, I think when you called before, I think I hung up on you. Sorry about that.
Okay, so we have three commissioners here. We have Andy Short presenting, we have Kim and Randy Mitchell as citizens, and Glorius and Peg, Glorius Castles and Peggy Temple from the Board of Health.
Hello, everybody.
Hello.
Hi, Ellen. So you say there were two other requests that you could?
No, no, they were just, they were, you know, I don't know the details of the, of the scenarios, but I believe somehow those, they weren't, they weren't variance requests, but they were somehow, somehow the permits got before either commissioners or the board. So yeah, so I don't know all the details, just, I don't know if that reminds anybody of it.
You know what, were they like in the 90s?
I think one happened right before I got here.
And was this before the new FEMA maps, or after, or did this have nothing to do with that?
Well, the, that project's been going on for quite some time, so I think the, that definitely affected those permits, right? Like, getting, getting loan was approved while that flood study was getting done, was, you know, there's new information coming out all the time. But I was just bringing that up, just in case it rung a bell as far as where this area is, but we're on Lower Hiawatha Road.
Would you go to DeBorgia and turn left instead of going over to the oasis, so you turn left and go down the old railroad bit?
Yeah.
Yeah, these are, these are these old DeBorgia town site, you know, 1902.
And they're on the other side of the interstate.
Right.
Where DeBorgia is, yeah.
Right.
So it's on the south, south side.
South side, yeah.
Yep. So the, yeah, so this right here is the lot in question. I believe 289, Lower Hiawatha, and 306 were the permits that were issued, and they were issued with LOMAs, and I believe they were, they were allowed to be issued because they did, once the Loma was done, they were allowed to meet the 100-foot setback. This one, so here's the lot in question. I'll show you the FEMA data for this. So this is the current approximate Zone A map. This is, you know, this is the map from the 60s, right, that they kind of drew with a pen and highlighter, but the whole, shows the whole parcel, so the whole parcel is currently within Zone A. Other than Ron removed the parcel with a Loma, I think, two or three years ago, but even removing the parcel with a Loma, it didn't allow the 100-foot setback in any direction, right, because you just don't have the, you know, once, all you're doing is, a Loma's kind of like a legal description, all it does is take the property out, so essentially the floodplain still is at the boundary of the property. So that's the, that's the old maps, old inaccurate maps. These are the new maps with elevations, and the blue is 100-year floodplain, and then the tan is 500-year floodplain, which we don't regulate. So essentially, the line that we're talking about kind of cuts right through the middle of the property. I'll bring up the aerial so you can see where the river is as well.
Yeah.
So there's the St. Regis right there. Zoom out a little bit, give some perspective. So is everyone kind of clear on where we're at in the world? Okay, so before, before I was even here, the Greens applied for a septic permit on this place, and so Tim, because it's so close to the river, Tim required them to do groundwater monitoring. And so site evaluation typically is you go out there, you dig a hole, you look for signs of groundwater, if you see signs, then you request that the applicant groundwater monitor the spring, and so then a four-inch PVC perforated pipe is stuck in the ground. And then throughout the spring, the, essentially, I would go out there and monitor it, you know, try to catch the, and try to catch the peak. So there was no groundwater, so that was step one, right? So no groundwater was found, so then you kind of go on to the next, it's like, okay, that's first step, is there groundwater? There isn't. So I believe either after that, once they determine that, then they, then Ron completed a Loma on the property, and so we can kind of, you know, without Ron being here, I don't, I can't quite understand the path that he took, but what we were, what we used to do in these situations, because we didn't have specific data like we do now, we actually have cross-sections, elevations, what we used to do is we used to say, "Okay, surveyor, consultant, go get a Loma and remove the property from the floodplain through FEMA." Now what I do, because we have elevations, I tell the surveyors, "Go map the site." And so what they do is they get on state plane coordinate, which is NAVD-ADA-88-Datum, and so, you know, you're comparing apples to apples, the elevations that are, you see here are the elevations that you'll see on the map, and so then they map, and if they can show enough area, basically, all I need is a site map that shows elevations, and then they just, they just show me, is it, is, can you meet the 100-foot setback from the floodplain? And so, you know, there was, there was a bunch of back and forth with Ron and I, but eventually, he produced that map, and that's what you have right here. And so this is the drain field location, and then this is where the, the new data that we have intersects the floodplain, where the floodplain intersects the property, this red line here. So that's basically the boundary, right? Obviously, you know, you can't, he can't meet the 100-foot setback to where it is. The one thing that does complicate this is there's a neighboring well for the property to the south, and so this is the 100-foot.
Andy, this is the Green representative calling, and she's going to, I'm just going to put her on speaker. Hello, this is Dawn, and we are in the septic permit meeting, is that, what is it, Andy? I'm sorry.
It's the, it's the Green variance request.
Okay. Hello?
Hello.
Yes, this is Dawn, Commissioner's assistants, we're, you're in the meeting now.
Okay, thank you.
Yes, you're very welcome.
Kim?
Yes?
Hey, Kim, this is Andy Short.
How are you?
I'm good, how are you doing?
Okay.
Uh, did you guys know that the meeting was today?
No, we had no idea it was today.
Would you, would you like to postpone it?
How long would it take if we postponed it?
I think at least a month, right? We're not, it would be December, it'd be a month from now, would be the soonest.
So if we don't postpone it, um, because Ron is on the phone, or on the road, and he's on his way to Trout Creek, so service is very spotty, I would rather not postpone it a month, as long as I can answer the question, we should be all right.
Okay.
Okay?
Sounds good. Sounds good. So does that make sense? So what we ask of the applicant is to, with the 100-year cross-sections that we have, to go out there and map it on that same datum, and then show us where the, show us where that line intersects the property, because the field conditions are going to be much more specific than this GIS data that we're looking at. All the GIS data that we're looking at tells us like, hey, looks like it's in the floodplain. Then they go confirm that, right, with actual ground elevations, right? Because...
Well, yeah, I mean, we show it, we can put approximate, I mean, we can go out and show it to the best of our ability. I mean, we have the flood elevation, I assume we're going with the new flood elevation.
Sorry, Kim, I wasn't, yeah, I wasn't asking you a question, I was just kind of presenting the project.
Okay, sorry.
That's all right, that's all right. So that's what we've gotten, that's what this map is showing. So this is, this is the lots, right, their old town site lots.
So how many do they have? Which ones?
The, you know, good question. I think 20?
So are they all of these in here?
Yeah, they're segregated by Pine Street.
Oh, okay, so...
So there is like this weird piece of Pine Street, like you could actually go and, you could travel, you know, you could travel between the property, because it's a public right away. So, once we received that, it was like, oh, hey, guys, you know, we're not meeting the 100-foot setback, so the only next step, the only next recourse they have is to ask for a variance at that point. So let's get into the state law. Local variances, as provided in this rule, a local Board of Health, as defined in 50-2-101 MCA, may grant variances from the requirements in the subchapter and in the Department of Circular DQ4, except for the requirements established by statute. The local Board of Health may grant...
Andy, hands to Ellen. I just want to check, how close are we? I know we have the 100-foot setback, we're only looking at...
I think we're looking at like 10 feet.
Oh, okay. I was just, yeah, just wondering, I'm curious.
Yeah.
Sorry, keep going.
The local Board of Health may grant a variance from requirements only if it finds that all the following criteria met. So here it is, so here's the criteria on which you guys must base your decision. Granting the variance will not contaminate any actual or potential drinking water supply, cause a public health hazard as a result of access to insects, rodents, or other possible carriers of diseases to humans, cause a public health hazard by being accessible to persons or animals, violate any law or regulation governing water pollution or wastewater treatment and disposal, including the rules contained in the subchapter, except for the rule of the variance it's requested from. So that's, that's the rule, we're allowed to do that based on I, I, I there. Pollute or contaminate state waters, degrade state waters, cause a nuisance due to odor, unsightly appearance, or other aesthetic consideration. Compliance with the requirement from the variance is requested would result in undue hardship to the applicant. The variance is necessary to address extraordinary conditions that the applicant could not reasonably have prevented. No alternatives that comply with this requirement are reasonably feasible, and the variance requested is not more than the minimum needed to address the extraordinary conditions. And so what you have before you is you have the applicant's application, and then you have my staff report, just to help you guide to a decision. And so in G, I kind of do an analysis of the variance criteria. And so I think the, kind of the, part of the matter is, will it, I think it meets, you know, this variance request, it meets everything, but will it pollute or contaminate state waters?
The well that you, that's okay, it's within the tagline.
Yeah, so the well, it's like the well too.
It looks like it, I just, it's quite important.
Yeah, so the neighboring well, it's got a 100-foot isolation zone, so it does meet the requirement. So we have, you know, we permit systems in this scenario all the time, right? Where the standard is 100 feet, that's that 100 feet right there, it's outside of that. A mixing zone can't, mixing zone from the drain field can't go through that well isolation zone, the mixing zone kind of runs this direction, I think, and that's a big part of why they chose that location for that septic system.
Need a drain field, you say mixing?
Yeah, yeah, so the idea is there's a zone, there's a plume of affluent moving in this direction with the gradient of the river. So, yeah, so the, certainly, you know, take into consideration as well and everything else, but I think the, I think the issue at hand is, so the reason for the 100-foot, we should talk about that, so the reason for the 100-foot setback to a floodplain is that septic systems work, they work extremely well, right? You know, you pass through thousands of pounds of soil, viruses, bacteria, they all bind the soil, get caught up in it. And so soil is like one of the greatest treaters of affluent that exists, works really well. When it, state law requires that you've got four feet of unsaturated soil below the drain field, and so that's where, that's really the, that's the issue, that's why you have that 100-foot setback, is it gives this kind of buffer where if you've got continuous flooding, soil saturation, is the soil saturated underneath the drain field for long enough to where you're contaminating state water? You know, the, if the viruses aren't in dry soil, then they just ride on water, and they, you know, that's, that's kind of the, that's kind of what gave septic systems a bad name, you know, 50s, 60s, 70s, is that people would just put them wherever, and they put them in groundwater, right? And then you got a well down gradient, it just moves along, the groundwater hits that well casing, and goes down there, and then you contaminate wells. And, you know, you also get, you know, algal blooms and rivers and high chlorides, high nitrates, like, you know, that was, that was a big concern because of metho globulinia, which is like blue baby syndrome, so. Septic systems...
You hear me, okay?
What's that, Kim?
We did groundwater monitoring on a tube right in front of the drain field, right?
Yeah, sorry, yeah, you missed that part, yeah, I discussed that, yeah, the first, yeah, the first step in the process was you guys doing a soil profile and groundwater monitoring out there.
Okay, I just wanted to make sure we were all aware of that.
Yeah. Yeah, so under normal conditions, this drain field should be fine, working fine, right? It's under those saturated conditions. But, yeah, so back to like blue baby syndrome, so like all of us here, we can drink water with high nitrates in it, and our guts process it, no problem. But what they were discovering was like wells that had high nitrates in it, and babies were drinking that water, right? They couldn't, they couldn't process nitrogen, and they would actually turn blue, and so that's, that's kind of where that public health standard for nitrogen came. Anyway, the thought is that, in normal situations, this drain field should function normally. It's under flooding or continuous flooding that you would have saturated ground, and then this, you know, that's the question, like, would this degrade state waters, I think is the, in the, in the state law here.
How deep is the monitoring well that you put in?
You do, you typically do like an eight-foot pipe. And the reason you do that is because the bottom of a drain field is usually like maximum 36 inches, and so you want to make sure that you're getting that four feet, so seven feet, and then, you know, you want to see if there's anything, you just dig an eight-foot hole, because you, eight-foot stick a pipe, you know, it's typical.
Is there any water at all in it?
Um, no.
Because we didn't have, we haven't had high water years, the past couple of years.
From my understanding, no.
Yeah, that was all before, yeah.
In May of 2018, I know the Clark Fork were really high, was it, did we get high that year as well?
Yeah.
Yeah, and I, let me see if I, was I able to, Kim, do you know when they did groundwater monitoring out there, what year?
Um, I was looking for that, and I don't have it in the file in front of me, but Tim Reed did it for two years. I know that because the first year was an abnormally dry year, so they did it for two years.
Oh, yeah, that's a good point, so we groundwater monitor, but you have to be, you have to have an average precipitation year, and if you don't, then you have to go to the next year, it's that, it's actually kind of painful, that's the scenario, because sometimes you're, especially nowadays, right?
Yeah.
You're in like four years of drought, and then, you know, you're, you can't do, you can't take groundwater monitoring.
So then, to contrast or to compare it, maybe that on your photo, you showed a pre-existing home that's actually closer to the St. Regis, what's the system and what's the scenario for the, for those folks?
Right here?
Yeah.
They were able, on this one, actually both these here, they were actually able to remove enough property to meet the 100-foot setback. So that's the issue here, right? That you just, you just can't, based on where the floodplain line is, you just can't meet that scenario.
Like you said, the Loma removes a property but doesn't necessarily change topography or, you know, saturation. So what's going on on the ground realistically with their floodplain issue, regardless of whether they're removed with a Loma? You know, what's the reality of what's happening there?
It's so, it's so hard to say, right? It's all, it's, because it is all theoretical, you know, you get a, you get a couple stuffed culverts and, you know, some down trees, and then like it's, man, everything's out the window, you know? Like you guys have seen that modeling for St. Regis, right?
Yeah.
It's kind of getting bottlenecked at the, at the...
Railroad.
Railroad, and that's just assuming like a free flow. You get, you know, you get a couple cars and log brands and... So it's just, you know, it's just the best information we have, right? It's like, because you got to draw the line somewhere, you got to say, okay, here's the blind, here's 100 feet.
And in an instance like this, like you said, other waters, you safeguard the public, what are the, what are the neighboring people, what are their comments on this proposal? The well people?
You know, that's a good question.
Because people that have lived there might have a better idea of if this is a reality or not.
Yeah, yeah. Yeah, and that's a, that's a great point, and now that you're saying that...
Because I know when you do a gravel pit, you send out lotuses, the neighboring landowners are going to be, a proposal here, how do you feel about that? And that doesn't occur in this instance?
No, but that probably would have been good practice, you know? I, now that you say that, I, well, yeah, I guess I wish I would have double-checked with the applicants too as well, let them know that the hearing was today. But, right, yeah, I mean, if you guys, if you guys wanted that, those folks notified, and we could, you know, certainly postpone this, time to think about it, and then get those people here as well, or at least notify them.
Good, history of people that have been there. I guess I've seen septic systems that were supposed to work, and they started pumping water out of the tanks where groundwater was filling the tanks, yeah. So until you're there and have it in the ground. Would we have to wait the full month if we wanted to postpone it?
Um, you know, what's our, what's our notification, two weeks? Two weeks. So if we wanted to have a special, if you guys wanted to have a special meeting?
It just might be a more, better informed decision if we had the...
Applicant.
The applicant, the surveyor, and maybe the neighbors, and maybe the, I don't know, is there another, the county attorney need to research something about states? Wasn't there something I read about someone saying state statute doesn't address this or does, or where was that letter?
Yeah, that might be just, you know... I think, and Ellen can certainly, you know, Ellen...
Andy, she's been dropped from the call.
Okay. Yeah, basically, you know, I prepared this report, it's, I'm making a bunch of statements about state law, and, you know, this is legal, and this is like, I'm not licensed to practice law in the state of Montana, so I always kind of have to put in there that, you know, this statement should be reviewed and approved by legal counsel. It's just kind of, you know...
Yeah, standard language.
Yeah.
I didn't know if there's a letter from them, there's no dispute ongoing with interpretation that so far, including their office in there?
No.
Oh, okay.
No.
Yeah, this is in here, my, 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 my staff recommended any decision regarding floodplain variance be reviewed by the General County Attorney.
Yeah, you know, it's, it's, yeah, this is just me interpreting, interpreting state law from variance stuff, looking, you know, looking at other counties and what they've done, and how the, you know, the processes worked. And so I, you know, I always have to put that in, and, you know, I don't think Ellen's probably had a chance to review this either.
Right.
So she could certainly like review my document and say, say, you know, thumbs up or thumbs down.
Okay, I'm going to put you back on speaker. Nope? That's okay, here you go.
Hi, Ellen.
Hello, sorry, I gave a couple little beeps, and then I couldn't hear you anymore.
Ellen, I'm guessing you probably haven't had a chance to review this staff report yet, I don't even know if you've been given a copy, but it does say in there that, you know, this, that, you know, my interpretation of state law should be reviewed by legal counsel, and of course, I just put that in there to, because I'm not licensed to practice law in the state of Montana.
Yeah, and I haven't seen the report, but I did look up, knowing that this was on the agenda, you had talked to me about it before, I did review the MCA just regarding when this could be allowed, so, but, I guess it's just a kind of a simple question, is there any other alternative to this? I know you talked about the other property they were able to allow for the setback because of the change in the property, but is there any other alternative?
No, this is, this is it. This is the, yeah.
So even if they move it over, it's...
Yeah, the, the difficulty... Yeah, it, the, the, the difficulty, yeah, so this is the, this is like the approved location. And the reason they chose this, right, is, is if you put it over here, then the thought is that the, that the plume of affluent from the, from the septic system would, would enter this well isolation zone. And so that, that's why it's, it's on the opposite side. And, and I don't know, right, he kind of, his mapping kind of trailed off here. He didn't, he didn't continue it on.
Yeah.
It may be worse over here. We don't, we don't know that. But essentially, this is kind of, this is kind of the only spot on the property that's out, that's not going to affect the neighboring well. But yeah, this is it. This is kind of the end of the road for...
Because it'd be kind of nice to know exactly on this, where their property is and where the floodplain is on the whole property, because the elevations are higher over on the other side, so it's kind of...
Yeah, it's, it's, um, the, the elevation, I don't know if the, 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 one of the challenges of, of creating a map like this is you have to extrapolate between cross-sections. So you have to, you have to imagine that the surface water is dropping a certain amount as it goes down the river, and then figure, extrapolating where does that intersect on the, on the topography of the property? And you know what? I, I, you know, these are, these are difficult decisions, and so, you know, postponing it to, you know, if you guys want to cruise out there and, you know, walk on the ground and just kind of, you know, that always helps me to get a feel for, get a feel for things. Is this, does this look like this would work? You know, you look, you can look at the river, you can look at the map, the floodplain map, you know, does this, you know, because sometimes floodplains funky. It, you know, the, the, water looks like it's going uphill sometimes. Not in all cases, of course. This might make perfect sense. But, but yeah, you kind of, you kind of need all that information at once when you're out there.
So has anything been mentioned about the fact that when this Loma was done and when the septic permit was applied for? What was removed? We had plenty of room at the time to meet all setbacks, but then this new floodplain study is being done and changed that. Has that been talked about? Because I don't know what's been talked about and what has not been talked about.
No, but, but we, yeah, yeah, Kim, we can, we can turn it over to you, and yeah, you can, um, and, right, some of this is, is, you know, like, Kim's not here, you know, I don't know, I don't know the full story. But Kim, I'm wondering, it, it's my understanding that the property itself was taken out by a Loma.
It was taken out by a Loma in 2019. With the floodplain study that had been done, um, previously, I'm looking for the exact date.
Because I, I still don't, you know, I don't have, but based on the map here, I still don't, even if you took the property out of the floodplain, it's still, you still don't have the hundred feet.
The previ, the previous one, when we did it, um, so in 1995, cross-sections were done for the Coker property to the south. And that's what we used when we submitted our Loma. Our Loma shows all of that out. Um, but now this new floodplain study, and for some reason, this is the one area that we have like a three-foot discrepancy between our elevations and the new floodplain study elevations. I don't know what it is, but at the time we did that and that we did the Loma, all that portion of all those lots were out. From Iron Street East, Southeast, all of that was out. There was nothing cutting through showing that some of it was still on the floodplain.
But, but the property, the, the property was out of the floodplain, the whole, the whole piece of property?
The whole property was out of the floodplain.
So my, that, my argument there is that even if this whole property was out of the floodplain, so, you know, this is a hundred feet here, this well, it's, it's close, right? Like this, this well is almost, almost showing you where this hundred feet intersects, like you still, even if the whole property was out of the floodplain, you still couldn't meet that setback.
What about Andy, the, I'm reading here that they're proposing that instead of a standard gravity drain field, it'd be a pressurized one. What does that do to enhance and improve the, the drainage that we're talking about?
So what that'll do is you can keep the system really shallow, because if it's gravity, right, you have to have a certain amount of drop.
Right.
And when it gets to the drain field, you got to be a certain depth. If it's pressure, then we can keep it really shallow, like eighteen inches kind of thing, and then you're even, you're even more separated from any groundwater that's saturated. So this, it's a good thing.
So that, that would, that, that's an improvement because they're not going to do the regular gravity.
Right.
They put in like a step system where they're, you know, putting the tank in and then just letting the liquids come off instead of everything.
That's what they're going to do.
Is that what they're going to do?
Yeah. Well, that, well, that's, that is how a septic system works.
Well, but it's that the first, the first stage, because we're having to deal with that. The first stage is more sealed, and so it, you have to have it pumped out more often, but it's, it's more sealed, and then it goes over into another like septic system that then goes out. That makes sense.
You mean the baffles inside the tank? There's a, there's a first baffle that goes over the wall to the second one?
Yeah. It's kind of the first, the first one is more sealed. It's, so it lets less...
It's more solid than it.
Yeah. It lets more of the affluent kind of...
Yeah, it's not a perfect, it's not a perfect system by any means, but, but essentially, yeah.
It would help a little bit.
That is how it works, is that it's, only affluent is supposed to be going to the drain field, you know, you can, if you, you know, you got a leaking toilet that's just running water, right, then you'll have more problems.
Right.
You know? So it's, it's not a perfect system, but that is the idea, that that's how the drain will, you know, there's a filter on the outlet typically. But in this situation, yeah, there'll be a, you know, there'll be a filter on the outlet, there'll be a pump chamber, it should only have affluent in it. Those also don't work perfectly, but it just depends on how, what you make, you know, it's just like a air filter at your house, right? Like if you don't change it every, every three months, then, you know, as a reminder, change your air filter.
Yeah. Are you going to use a septic system or a...
It's, it's down there at the...
Oh, okay.
Going to the west end of town.
Yeah.
Because we got here fishing and I'm trying to remember what, because there's one in that's really soggy all the time, but I think it's kind of...
Off there by DeBorgia?
Yeah. But I think that's...
I'm trying to remember too where the location was when that one year, well, probably was in ninety-six, ninety-seven, the big year, but remember it washed out all of that old Milwaukee railroad grade in just...
Yeah, well, that's right.
That's down...
Or it'd be upstream.
It'd be a little...
Well, it does not raise, or what, a couple, three years ago, it washed down, down below that, between, just above Henderson.
By the, by the S-curves there.
Yeah, up above Henderson.
Where the fiber optic.
Oh, that must have been May of 2018 then, huh?
Yeah, that's way, yeah, that's way.
Yeah, if you go upstream for a bit, there, where the big curve is, it gets real marshy back in there too.
Where you come off of, when you go up Deer Creek and you come off and turn on, like you're going to go down the railroad grades.
Yeah.
There's a real sharp kink right there.
Right.
Remember when, uh, I think Jason and Tim came up with the idea of putting some trees in there to divert the river?
Yeah.
Remember we had discussions about that? They're not very far from that corner, but then neither is that.
Yeah, a lot of one map show that, they have a blue kind of almost where they want their house.
But that's not the river. The blue's not the river, the river's over here. The blue's flooded.
Right, yeah, okay, okay. Yeah, the floodplain comes kind of wild in there.
That's the river there, and then that, that big house is somewhere.
Yeah, that's what, weird too, that it's closer to anybody.
Yeah.
Yeah. They're probably going to get the computer set up. This is the least. Hopefully. You know, they're moving the river, so... How much they change it at St. Regis, they change it.
Yeah, we should have gotten one first, huh?
Everything was changed in downtown.
Blood mapping and...
Oh, it's just funny, yeah, it's funny, it's working out like that.
Do you know the well that's over there? Is it a deeper well or pretty shallow because of the water?
Um, that's a good question. I might be able to...
Seems like it should be pretty shallow, but who knows? The river, I prefer, yeah. I don't know why it's over here, the river, it's only seventy feet. And we're set up quite a ways. So this, do you know, Andy, on this one, this map, proposed, and it's got a second well?
Yeah, that's their proposed, that's the...
Well, for this whole property?
Yep.
Okay.
Yep.
So that's probably why they can't move it over here, because they've got their well up.
Yeah, that's, that's, yeah, they also have to account for their own well.
Right.
But it's, it's, the, the big issue is this, this mixing zone.
Yeah.
See, it would be going, it would be going in that direction.
Yeah. At least here it's going away from it.
So we've got about nine minutes to the next one.
Hey, Andy, it's Ellen.
Hi.
Do you, would you feel more comfortable if I did review the report, especially, you know, prior to the commissioners making a decision?
You know, I, I would...
Kind of cross the Ps and not the Is?
I would feel more comfortable if you reviewed it, if the greens were here, Rocky Mountain was here, and you guys had a little bit to digest it, and that we, we send letters to the adjacent landowners.
So, Kim, are you still there?
I am, and I actually, at this point in time, because I can't hear most of what's going on, I'm totally in the dark, I would feel more comfortable if you guys put it off.
Well, that's what I was going to ask you, is that we're kind of, we have a couple of questions and we, we, we won't do it a whole month. We, we have to advertise for two weeks, so maybe we'll try to shoot for some time in like December tenth or something like that possibly, and then that way you guys can all be here and the applicants can be here, and maybe then our county attorney can review language, and then we can find out things like how deep is the well neighboring, what year, I'd like to know what year were those groundwater tests performed that you guys did, uh, and then maybe have...
Actually, it was Tim Reed that did the groundwater monitoring, I can, just to clear that up right now, I know that.
Okay, I'll ask Candace to find out what year Tim, Tim Reed did the groundwater test, and then, then we can be a little bit more informed and intelligent, because, I mean, this decision is kind of a, you know, make or break deal, and we don't want to, none of us want to take it lightly, and we don't want to impede anybody from improving their property, but we don't want to do it with haphazard information.
Well, and I agree, and it, and I'm, I just can't hear most of what you guys are even talking about, so...
Yeah, and we apologize for you not being notified, eh?
So I guess...
It was a little bit of a shock to get that call from Candace, but I know that happens, so I would feel more comfortable putting it off.
All right.
Okay. Well, we'll shoot for mid-December then.
Okay, just send us the...
Okay. All right, I'll, I'll move that we, given that we're kind of not all, we have a lot of questions unanswered and give the county attorney time, I move that we move this to a special board of health meeting that Andy and Candace can arrive at a date, given that they're required to do a two-weeks notice advertising, and then set it, set it up. And given that, I guess it doesn't even necessarily have to be on a Friday, if it's a special meeting that needs to, whatever works.
All right, have a second to that?
I'll second that.
All right. All those in favor, say aye.
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 Okay, we'll let you know, Kim, so you can bring your preparation and maybe Mr. Warren and, and the applicants.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Kim.
Bye.
Thanks, everybody.
Yeah, bye-bye.
Thanks, Ellen.
Bye-bye, thanks, Eddie.
Okay, the only other thing on the agenda is the health department's booster shot discussion, and she has sent a, send out here, there it is. Dawn, has everybody gotten one of those?
I think everyone has. Denley doesn't, he just walked in, but I can give you one right now.
All right.
Otherwise, everybody should have this.
Everybody would like to. Read through that.
So I guess we really don't need any action on it, it's just a report.
Yeah, just information.
Yeah, it's just a discussion.
Yeah.
Yep.
All right, so setting the next meeting date.
Are we going to set it so that we have Andy's in it, or how do we want to do that?
Yeah, I was going to say, you probably have to figure, look at their schedule and, and determine, and we got to all look at our schedules.
Mm-hmm, yep.
And I guess, I guess make sure that the green...
Right.
Make sure everybody can be here.
So I can work on that, if everybody's okay with me getting back to you on a date?
All right.
Yeah.
Okay.
All right. I don't know if that works. But we have to coordinate with... Right, yeah, yeah, but, yeah.
All right, so we have a motion to adjourn.
I'll make that motion.
Second.
I'll second.
All right, motion and a second to adjourn. Thank you.
We're, we're ready to start with DNRC and, and I forgot your name.
I'm Tiffany Lydon.
Tiffany.
Yep, been here before, and Nadine Wadsworth is my counterpart, but she's, uh, uh, patching in remotely here, so I'll introduce those folks here, but I also have, I'll let you introduce.
My name's Doug Bruger, I'm the state floodplain engineer and a Helen officer.
Okay.
All right, motion and a second to adjourn. Thank you.
We're, we're ready to start with DNRC, and, and I forgot your name.
I'm Tiffany Lyden.
Tiffany.
Yep, been here before, and Nadine Wadsworth is my counterpart, but she's, uh, uh,
I'm the...
Patching in remotely here, so I'll introduce those folks here, but I also have, I'll let you introduce.
My name's Dodge Brueger, I'm the state floodplain engineer and a Helen officer.
Okay.
So nice to meet you.
You came all the way from Helena today?
Yeah.
We did.
You did slide off Mac Pass?
It's not raining there yet, but they're...
Yeah, the way back it'll be a little dicey probably, so, but, yeah.
Okay. All right. We'll take her away.
Okay, super. Well, thanks for, for having us here today. So I'm Tiffany Lyden, and I do a lot of the outreach work on these floodplain mapping projects, so I've met with you several times now over the course of this project. I think the last time was just about two years ago, I think, right before we're getting ready to do some public meetings about the draft results. We do have a couple folks on the line here that are listening in from Missoula and Helena, so I'll just go ahead and introduce them myself here. We have Nadine Wadsworth, who is my counterpart, who's also been here and here for the public meetings, and Tracy Sears, who works a lot with the insurance side of this program, so she's here for questions. And then Larry Shock, who is the regional engineer out of Missoula, who works a lot with Andy on some of the technical, more technical aspects of floodplain. He's available as a resource for the county to help with evaluating those things. And then we have a few folks from FEMA that are on the line, because FEMA's a part of this project and provided a lot of the funding and doing the technical work, so, yeah. Anything else before I kind of launch in?
No.
Okay. Yeah, so I, we have a couple of kind of slides here just to sort of help us walk through things, but like I said, we, we were here, I think it was just about two years ago, and so we're here to kind of give another update as this project is progressing along at certain different milestones. This is a project we've been working on for a number of years with Mineral County, and there are a lot of folks that have been involved. It does involve the county and the, both the Town of Superior and Alberton. Here are some of the folks that are on the line today from our agency, from DNRC, and then FEMA is involved with the funding, and they do a lot of the review work to make sure everything's meeting national and state standards. And then some of the folks we don't have here, if there are some technical questions, who we contracted with to do a lot of the technical engineering and survey work from Pioneer and Dowell and Morrison and Merrily have all been involved, because this is a pretty large project. So what we are talking about, just to kind of refresh everybody's memory, is that we're talking about floodplain maps. And the purpose of floodplain maps is really to identify those areas at risk of flooding. And what gets put on the floodplain maps, the ones you have now, and the ones that we are looking to update, are those areas that are at risk of getting flooded when we have a hundred-year flood event. And a better way to think of that flood event is not in terms of years, but it's the flood event that has a 1% chance of occurring in any given year. So sometimes when you say a hundred-year flood event, people say, well, we have one, we're not gonna have one again for another hundred years, and so I can plan ahead that way. But it's a better way to think about it is a percentage. It's a pretty big flood event, has a 1% chance of occurring in a year. So we, these maps, the floodplain maps, they are official maps, you have floodplain maps in Mineral County, and they get used for a lot of different purposes. You use them, Andy uses them, to determine where you, your county floodplain regulations apply. Same for the Town of Superior, where their floodplain regulations apply is, is what is map, what is on those maps. The maps also get used by lenders, if somebody's purchasing a house, the lender will go to the maps to determine if that house is in a floodplain. If it is, they do have to require flood insurance as part of the, part of the, part of the loan.
Unless they do something like raise the grade, bring in soil, or...
Yep, if they're, if, if they can show they are above that, that flood evolution, that basically would be safe and high and dry in a flood event, then they can, that insurance can be waived. But if that house is looking like it will get wet, if there's nothing else, no other information provided, the bank is required to use the maps, because the banks use federal money, and it's just part of that whole process that... So if somebody has a house and they're, they don't have a loan on it, they can decide, they can make a choice if they want to carry flood insurance or not. So it's required when you, when you have a loan from a bank. You also use them for planning, septic and subdivision purposes. Those are a part of the decision-making, things that you use as, as information for some of those local decisions. And also probably for emergency management, like are there roads that are gonna be overtopped in the event of a flood? And I think we have an emergency manager here, yeah, great, thank you, remember you from the public meeting. So all really important things, but we recognize that sometimes maps need to be updated, if there's new data available or if there's been a change. And for Mineral County's situation is your existing floodplain maps are pretty darn old. They were produced actually by Department of Housing and Urban Development back in 1978. At the time, they called them flood hazard boundary maps, but those are your maps. There's really only been one revision to one area over time, and then in 1996, they just, FEMA just converted them to the, a new name, but they are essentially the same maps. They're very coarse, there were no engineering studies done at the time, they used the best information they had available, probably a combination of some old topography maps or some other things to basically try to depict those areas that could be at risk of getting flooded. So on this map, you see, it's just that kind of shaded area called Zone A there. Again, no updates. So that's really what has prompted this project. Prior to, well, I know Andy's office has been asking for, for updated maps for quite some time. We kind of looked at trying to do that back in 2008, which is now a long time ago. There was no funding available then, we've been kind of keeping it in the, on the list, and we were able to finally get Mineral County into the, into the line to get some grant funding, starting in 2016. As the county, you provided some letter of support, and you also provided some grant match. We had to split the project into two phases, just because it was so large. Most of the funding came from FEMA, DNRC did kick in some of the funding for this, but essentially what we, what the project is doing is updating anywhere where you have a mapped floodplain. And that, for Mineral County, that's everywhere you see on that map that's in purple or red. Um, I didn't bring, I do have some here, before I go into the schedule. Maybe for folks here, if you're interested, how do you update a floodplain map? Do you just try to draw new lines? What do you do? There is a pretty involved process to go through to, to update the maps, and we kind of have a little brochure about sort of what goes into that survey work, looking at the stream gauges to figure out how much water is coming down each stream, where you don't have gauges, you have other information you use to figure that out, and then a lot of the engineering and mapping work. So there's quite a bit of technical work that goes into that. I won't go into that now, but if you've got questions, we can certainly go through that, or, or we can talk to other folks later about that. Okay, so let's just kind of take a look at sort of where this project is. Again, we started back in 2016, collecting a lot of that technical data, doing a lot of the engineering work. We contract out a lot of that work, so those are those contractors you saw in that first slide who were involved in that. One of those contractors was here, I think, three years ago, when we were kicking it off to kind of talk about their involvement in that. So fast forward, two years ago, when we were here last, meeting with you as a commission, we, out of that, we had some draft floodplain maps that were produced. So that was fall of 2019. At that time, when we met, we talked about getting that information out to the public, and the decision was, we'll, we'll host a number of open houses, so invite people to come, send out postcards for folks to invite them to those and get them that information. So we're here kind of where that yellow star is, and I'll come back to this timeline as we get a little bit further along, but I just wanted to kind of give you a little bit of context. All right. So we had, I did, we held public meetings, two of them, two open houses, one in St. Regis and one in Superior. This is the postcard that Andy and Candace spent a lot of time mailing out a, a postcard to anybody that could be affected by the new, the new maps, the new draft floodplain areas, letting them know that there are draft maps available and that we were hosting these public meetings. We held the first two in February, and then our third one was scheduled in Alberton on March 19th of 2020. And as you probably all know, that's a pretty significant date, that was just at, as things were really shutting down for COVID. So we ended up having to cancel that meeting kind of at the last minute, and what we ended up doing is, we tried to kind of delay it, what we ended up doing is recording, recording the meeting, a meeting, and then we put that on the website and let folks know that had, had been interested in attending the Alberton meeting. So hopefully, a lot of those folks did get that information, but we did not end up getting to hold a in-person meeting in Alberton just due to the situation. Want to say anything more about that?
Yeah, and we also, didn't we, I was at a town council meeting in Alberton, and we also had DNRC called in.
That was when we were talking about them being part of the program, we, I guess we did talk, we talked with the town council, you're right, about the maps.
Yeah.
But we didn't, it wasn't really a landowner focused meeting.
Right, right.
Yeah, I was curious about that, too, because the Town of Alberton itself is clearly not near any of the flooding that goes on the river, but there's some pretty nice homes in the Albert Reardon subdivision, over the plateau, over the National Pier Bridge and down there. So I was kind of curious if those folks were aware that some of the homes they're in might suddenly become in a, what do you call it, a firm? A new firm map or a...
Floodplain map, yeah, for, yeah.
Yeah, and I, so I was kind of, some of those folks, I don't know if they go to the town council meetings, I didn't know if they were...
I will say, we had sort of, as this all was unfolding, we did have a lot, I had a lot of phone calls back and forth with a lot of the folks in that subdivision and Albert's himself, we did have some discussions about that, so it's, it's not, you know, it wasn't perfect, but I, there was definitely a lot of, we've had a lot of emails and a lot of phone calls kind of early on. I don't know if you heard some more.
Yeah, and we, we, we sent this postcard to them. I've had lots of conversations out there, and I've had lots of folks who were about to build.
Yeah.
And I go through the, the whole spiel with them, and what they're doing now is, what they're, what they're being told to do is, you know, hire a surveyor, have them put a monument on the property, so you know where that base, what elevation is. And then it, but it's basically up to them to do that, and then to, and to build up. The two septic systems that I've had installed there, that they, those, those folks did that, they, Jody Albert Reardon was building out there.
Yeah.
I don't know if they're actually, I think what people are doing is they're, they're kind of eyeballing it, their, their neighbor maybe got a monument put out there, and they saw where they put their floor, and then they're like, okay, and then they're building up on it. But they don't, they don't have to, right? They don't, they, they don't have to, because they're not currently, they're currently out of the floodplain, so...
Well, and a question related to that, then, if they set that monument, is that gonna change again in another year or two? You know, kind of like St. Regis had a standard years ago, of course, we know that there are some problems, but that's what I'm saying. The one like now by Albers, how, how long is that monument accurate? Is that accurate now? Is it gonna change?
Well, they, they do have the draft maps are, are available, and I guess let's look at that.
So I'm saying, that, that is your final map, then, that they, that elevation is a good elevation that should be good for...
For them to mark from?
For 10 or 20 or 30 or, for down the road. That's my question.
That's the idea, I mean, I can't speak to it specifically.
If they put it in the right spot.
If they put it in the right, yeah.
That kind of thing, but that's the idea, yeah, those, those elevations that have been distributed are not like gonna be, not gonna be wavy over the next, yeah, that's the idea.
I, I guess one caveat to that, the, the maps are draft, and they have to go through a public review process that we'll talk about. So, you know, there sometimes can be changes, if somebody points out, oh, there's an error or something that needs to be changed, but, but by and large, that's spent your review.
Best science available for right now, and that should, should be good for the future.
And if an appeal led to a change of those, then there would be a lot, there'd be a lot of outreach, and it would be a very, there'd be another round of due process, all that, so...
But, but Denley, you asking that reminded me that this, I actually had, I had the engineers look at this area specifically, because there was, right, it was in the floodplain, Albers, they had it taken out, so engineers had it taken out, and there was such a huge discrepancy about where the floodplain is now, and then the same engineering firm was working on it, and they've got massive discrepancies, I think three feet, two feet between what was done when Albers was approved and what's currently out there now. So I was like, hey, guys, like, can you all get together and make sure that you're using the best data possible? Are people actually getting cross-section, are they getting cross-sections of the river? And so I have this, actually, Roman, you asked me about it once upon a time, I had that, that lengthy email from Larry Shock about, yes, they're accurate, here's why, those last ones were inaccurate. So we did specifically look at this.
Because we know in that area for sure, the north side is not gonna change with the freeway and the high bank, and so...
Right.
That, that is a consistent, that's always gonna be there, so if the other side, but if they did the cross-sections, it's the best knowledge for now.
Um, so if people are looking for information, and this is what we did direct people to on that postcard that they got, and then we had the public meetings, and this is, we continually update this, but there's a project website that we put together, and that's the URL at the top, so anybody can just type that in. It'll take you to this website that just explains the project, and then it does have all of the draft maps on there. You can look at them individually, or we did put those together as a viewer, which is a lot more handy for people to look at, and I want to just show you what that is. I know we went through this two years ago with you, the three of you, but I just want to kind of bring it back up here. So, let me go back, so if you're on that website, there's this button here, I guess you can't see that blue button, kind of middle of the screen, it says preliminary map viewer.
Yeah.
And that will take you to this interactive map viewer, where you can zoom in, you can type in your address on that little magnifying glass there, and it'll zoom you in, you can pan around, and essentially what it's showing is what the results of the new study is, the preliminary results. And so the outer boundaries of the blue are where the, the results are showing that the hundred-year, or I'm gonna call it a 1% floodplain, would be based on the new results. Inside of that is a more strict zone, we call a floodway. Typically, you're gonna have the fastest and deepest moving water in that floodway, so that's red there. Here, the lines are actually kind of together, so it almost looks like, the, the blue is a lot, definitely along, along the outside of that whole area. This particular shot, you can't see it, maybe a little bit in Superior there, kind of down towards the southeast, a little bit of brown, that's the 500-year floodplain, is also mapped in here, just there for informational purposes. That would take a much larger flood event for those areas to get wet. You don't use those for regulations, and banks don't typically require insurance in there, but we just put that on there. I do want to call attention to one quick thing here, you'll see Flat Creek is kind of called out a little differently. There was a, an engineering study that was actually done on Flat Creek a number of years ago through the Economic Development Corporation, I think funded that, so we did not re-study that. That's the only one we didn't get updated information for. But, so this is the draft maps, you can go to these different tabs on the left, and it'll take you to see what, well, what is, how does that compare to your current map? So you can see, based on that, that really rough kind of shaded area on the map, we digitized those, and you can see this is what they had produced back in 1978. And then you can go one step further to that next tab and just see a comparison. So I'm gonna just do that here. Can, we put the colors there, blue would be, was in the floodplain before, will still be in the floodplain based on the new information. Green and red, you could kind of think of it as like good, good, bad, or go, stop. So green would be area that's coming out of the floodplain, and red is area that is getting added based on the new information. getting added based on the new information. How did we do overall? If you look at the whole county, this is kind of just a, I think this is the whole county, just overall, there are some areas that are, more areas getting removed than is getting added. So maybe that's good. We did do some calculations of rooftops, we don't have a great way to quantify those numbers, but it just gives you a little bit of some numbers there.
For all of Mineral County, number of rooftop changes?
Yeah, I think that was, I have to double check, but I think that's what that was from, it should be the whole, whole one. And that would be just rooftops in, that were in that floodplain, yeah. But you could be getting a, you know, outbuilding or something, so we didn't have a way to distinguish, and we did that rough thing there of what that was. Okay. So, St. Regis area, we know was definitely one of the areas of concern kind of with the new data, it was the area where we probably saw the most change. And so, I know we spent quite a bit of time talking about that when we were here two years ago, and certainly was a lot of the focus of, of the meeting and, and some of the activities since then. This is what the new map, new study is showing for the St. Regis area. You do have the confluence of the two rivers here, but there, it is showing a significant flood risk from the St. Regis River coming in. And why is that? You get a little bit of overtopping of water, kind of, I don't know what the, I forget what that crossing is there, somebody remind me, up to the
Little Joe.
Little Joe, yeah. Kind of coming on the other side of the highway there, and then you also have water coming through the underpass there, and then what's, what the results we're finding is that it's getting, if you had a really big flood event, this 1% flood event, a lot of water coming through there, and then it's not able to get through that railroad bridge very well. So what's happening is you're having quite a bit of backing up of that water. And so that's the blue area that you're seeing in a lot of the town of St. Regis. So, that's what their model, engineering modeling was showing, is that that area is susceptible to getting flooded in part because of that.
Do you know, Tiffany, if, I guess I kind of considered a 100-year marker, was the big 96, 97 winter, we had a lot of water and a lot of flooding. Do you know if any of the, anybody documented to see where that might line up with this prediction of the new FEMA maps? Like, are they even close to what happened then? Or is it, is this an, is this exaggerated from what happened then?
I think this, I'm kicking myself that I didn't pull that up and have that handy.
I'm in the ping.
Larry, are, did you hear the question from the commissioner about how the 96, 97 flood kind of compares to what our, what the 100-year flood is?
Yes, I did hear the question, and no, I don't know that we had data to compare to. I'm not saying we didn't, or we did, I just don't know.
Okay. That's a great
Tiffany, I'm pulling up the hydrology report right now.
Okay, we'll get that answer for you, but I do remember we discussed that with some landowners. I don't think, I don't think it rose to that magnitude, but, but I think it was, you know, was a bigger event. Does anybody else know here?
There are a few low spots between 135 and the railroad grade that maybe had a little bit of standing water in it, a few of the low, low spots. But there wasn't any water flowing, and it didn't flood around the super eight, and it didn't flood any of the businesses in town.
The Exxon and the four-way, or?
None of that, none of that.
Water's standing in, or Jerry, it wasn't raining.
And out, and out by Jensen's, out by Jensen's, that gravel pit, it rose a little in the gravel pit, but
This is the Jensen area.
Yeah, come to your right, across the road, it rose in that gravel area, because that's a gravel pit, and it's a little
And then Scrub Scribner's house, which is raised up to you and water, water all around him right here.
Okay.
But his house wasn't flooded, but there was water in the yard and driveway.
But as far as in-town and back behind, you know, across from the park and in that area, there wasn't water flowing there.
Yeah, we'll, we'll get that information, because that's really helpful to have for reference, I'm sorry we don't have it handy right now.
And just, I don't think there's, is there a gauge on the river? If, if it wasn't measured, then it's hard to place it, is the challenge.
Oh, right, that's the challenge.
So that would be the only reason we wouldn't be able to
You mean a height measurement, or like a cubic feet per second?
Like a, like a cubic feet per second, USGS gauge? There is, okay, so then we should be able to let you know.
Picture-wise, I'm not sure, but I, I think Tim Reed went around quite a few places and took pictures, whether you can get some, whether that's on file in Andy's office, or
Yeah, they're really hard to, like, I can't, I've seen them, and they're impressive, right? But there's lots of them, I'm like, I don't know where they're sitting.
No, you know, I can view them and see if I might go way back, know if they're around St. Regis, or if they're in this stuff in the background or whatever.
And I will say, the engineers try to do that, they try to look at, are there any historical records to try to calibrate the engineering modeling they're doing, so they do look at that.
I do remember Tim going around taking some pictures in their way, so I think, and he must think for, for future building sites, he'd have
Yeah, for documentation, yeah.
That's a great idea.
Okay. I know we're short on time, I'm going to just zip through this. Do you have public comment at 11:30 here?
If there is public comment, people can interrupt us, otherwise we'll keep going, Tiffany. Normally, sometimes we have nobody show up, so it's not critical. If they're, if they are here, we'll stop and entertain their suggestion, but
Okay, anybody?
Mine can wait.
You sure? Okay, I don't want to take your time, Dylan.
Yeah, keep going.
All right, so this is, for comparison, this again is that tab two on that viewer, this is your, the current floodplain map that you have. So, you know, when they did this back in 1978, this is the map, you know, I'll just show you first, you have it. You know, this is the old one, and then we basically just digitized it, so you're seeing it not on a paper, but on digital. So, for whatever reason, they, you know, they, they got that area you were talking about, Commissioner, kind of, but they also got some other areas that probably aren't really susceptible to flooding. So, so, you know, the maps will replace that, but it certainly, definitely showed more risk to the town of St. Regis than previously, than they had previously mapped.
And so, Tiffany, that, that would, could potentially be remedied? That, this blue could be reduced if somebody had a gazillion dollars and did something different with that railroad bridge?
Maybe, that was, that was a question that you had actually asked hypothetically, well, could, you know, if that changed, it was certainly the railroad, if you took away all those other challenges, you know, what would the impact be? And we did, after the, we met with you, we did go back and kind of talk to the engineer about, well, so what are you seeing, what, you know, where are the, so they provided this map that we sent to Andy and you, kind of where the, where the water's flowing, but the more important one is, is they did a little kind of hypothetical for us, and what, what they just did, and it's very rough, is that right now, I think that bridge span is somewhere around 100 feet. What if you hypothetically expanded that to 200 feet? And what they found is that that purple area kind of could, would, would not, would not get flooded. And then if you expanded that larger, I think to 300, that's what it says on there, then that green area could, could come out of that. So, those were really rough, he just, they just did it as kind of a
Estimate.
A quick estimate for you. But I will say, I think that's one of the advantages that I know the county and St. Regis, the resort district has been working on getting you a hazard mitigation plan in place, so that you could be eligible for some funding to, to actually look at, in more detail, what some options could be to reduce the flood risk to St. Regis, and then apply for some grants, hopefully to, to actually implement some, some things that would, would mitigate that. Does that make sense?
Yeah, I was hoping Mike Day might be here, or get in the loop with us, because he's met with us in St. Regis two or three times
Right.
In the last couple of years, or maybe three or four years, reporting to the resort district. And, yeah, the bottom line, the railroad bridge, he, he alluded that the railroad just doesn't interest in working with anybody on that, because they don't want to spend the money and they'd have to disrupt traffic for so long.
There are some other things too, to try to drive some culverts and stuff through that wouldn't necessarily stop, but, yeah, they say to disrupt any train traffic, but they do that some places, it's just a lot more expensive.
Yeah, yeah.
It's funny though, that, that whoever did that estimate there didn't remove as much of the land that I was thinking it would.
Exactly, I, me too.
And it's rough, it's, you know.
But part of that is, and what they talk about, and the problem is that with the Clark Fork River, the water going into the Clark Fork, that actually backs up water into the St. Regis. So it's not, you'd almost have to go out and dredge part of the Clark Fork out front where the St. Regis comes in to have as much effect as kind of what we're thinking.
Yeah, I thought the four-way would be a little bit more enhanced by that.
And, and there are, like, there are certainly other things to consider, certainly for new development, doing some things where you're building up higher, so maybe still in the area, but you could, you could, you know, make it so you're reducing some of that risk to buildings in the future. There may be some other things that are, that are out there. And I guess that's why I wanted to kind of, you know, commend everybody for the hard work to basically get a plan in place, you have a newly adopted plan from Mineral County. Do you want to speak to that?
Or Andy? Anybody that knows more about the, your pre-disaster mitigation plan that just was recently approved? No? Okay. And I do, I do also think you recently got, we, we participated in some of the review of that to try to help the county, to provide some of that assistance, and then I believe you had
Yeah, with that, right, like drafting that plan, right, that allows us to be available for
Grants.
Mitigation grants?
I think we got one grant, and they came for two, and approved for one.
Okay. And the one grant that you did get is to, to start to take a look at what options might be available to reduce that flood risk, which is great. So, okay, and that's, that's going on right now, right? Okay, and then who, you hired some, somebody to kind of take a look at that? Okay. All right. So we are certainly supportive of that, and we'll continue to sort of help as, as we can with that, and want to, that, so, okay. Moving on then, here's that timeline we kind of saw earlier. Again, we're, what's happened since we had those public meetings is that those draft maps, we gave all that information to FEMA, and then FEMA took that and put that onto preliminary FEMA maps. They still don't replace your current ones, but they're official preliminary FEMA maps. Those maps need to go through an official review period, it's called a 90-day appeal and comment period, so that will be coming up as kind of your next milestone, looking at this spring.
So banks can't utilize that for their assessment?
Not yet, they still have to use this until they're adopted.
What does that do for someone who's midstream, pardon the pun, with their mortgage payment?
Yeah.
And then suddenly the rules change upon them? What happens? Now the bank says, hey, you weren't in the floodplain, but now you are, you've got to get flood insurance?
That does happen, banks will, will reevaluate loans periodically, especially after a mapping update, so they'll reevaluate that, so that, that does and can happen. So that's why, why we want to just get the word out to landowners, so they know that ahead of time and are preparing for that. I was going to say, I want to say about that. I mean, you get a lot of calls about that probably, or I know I get calls about that, but it is, I mean, the, let me back up for a second. Timing-wise, we are still quite a ways out, we're probably estimating that the new maps would go into effect mid to late 2023, so we're not quite two years, but, so people have some time to kind of look at that.
And when you say they're effective,
Mm-hmm.
What, what has to happen on the county's end? Do we, we have to officially adopt them, or FEMA decides, hey, these are effective?
A couple things, great question, and so, right now, they're preliminary maps, so you have a whole set of these maps in your office, people can look at them, they're officially say on there, preliminary for Mineral County. Those go through this 90-day appeal and comment period, maybe I'll go through that here, that we're anticipating would start this spring. Anybody who has comments, or if they want to appeal the information, they think they're, they have better information that needs to replace what, what the study is showing, what they do is they provide that to Andy. Andy collects all that, and then forwards it all to FEMA, and then to us too, to keep us in the loop. FEMA will review it, if there's anything in those comments or appeals that warrant a change to the maps, they'll make that change. And then they issue a more final set of maps, and then you have six months after that to, and they go, and then they get adopted by FEMA. Your role in that is basically, so here's this, so, spring 2022 is this appeal and comment period, we resolve those appeals and comments, FEMA finalizes the maps, and then six months later, they will go into effect. Your role as the county is to basically collect those comments like we talked about, forward them to FEMA, and then you need to be ready to update your regulations so that they're reflecting the new maps by the time they go into effect. So those are your kind of main responsibilities as the county.
And Tracy Sears, who's on the call, will coordinate a lot of that with you.
Yeah. The one thing is, your county regulations are pretty old, so you need to reference that you're not going to regulate to those anymore, you are going to regulate to the new ones, but you also, at this point, need to just kind of overhaul your regulations because they're, they need to be updated.
95, yeah.
Yeah. So, Town of Superior already did their update, Tim did that a number of years ago, so they're, they're actually in good shape, they'll be able to just kind of swap out the reference to the maps, but it will be a bigger lift for you guys at the county, just because your existing regulations are, need to, need to be updated. Does that make sense?
Yeah, but the, but the county doesn't say these maps are effective, FEMA?
FEMA says they're effective, and you do it by, by putting in your regulations, that's your, that's how you say they're effective, by updating your regulations and having your regulations go effective.
And the commissioners approve their regulations?
What if we don't approve them?
Um, the maps will still go into effect, yeah, I mean, insurance will still
We can blame, we just blame it on government.
Right, yeah, yeah. I guess you would still be regulating to those, that's your, I guess. Yeah, I mean, I, I was, sorry, Tracy's going to say
I'm sure if we didn't adopt it, the bank would
Yeah, the bank would be using these, but Tracy will say, there is a problem, if, if the county doesn't kind of uphold their end of the bargain and update their regulations, FEMA can come through and they can actually sanction you.
If we have a disaster, they won't fund us.
They won't fund you, and actually, they will, they will start to not provide insurance, and so then somebody goes to get a loan, and then it's a
I was just wondering if we were cantankerous, what would happen?
Probably better if you're not.
Right.
We'll work with you to kind of work through that, but. Tracy, is that okay? Is there anything else you want to add to that?
Yeah, no, you handled that well, yeah. Unfortunately, it's the only process by which if the community does not adopt them by that effective date, then FEMA does an immediate sanction on the community. So, we, we are, as Tiffany mentioned, we're committed to try to work with the community to hope that that doesn't happen and, and get you to that, you know, over that final finish line.
So Andy, any questions on kind of, you know, this will be, this is a big part of what Andy's
Yeah, he's been dealing, he's been, we don't know how many complaints he gets or calls, or, but
Yeah. I guess I, I will, maybe I'll back up. So the, updating the floodplain regulations is definitely on your plate, we'll help you with that. I guess the other question is, that appeal and comment period will be, happen sometime in spring, we're, we're expecting, we don't have exact dates right now. It's up to you, FEMA will put just a little legal notice in the paper, and we'll, we'll put out some sort of, we'll, we'll do a, a press release to the paper if they want to run it, to let people know. But that's the extent of kind of the public outreach for that. Sometimes counties decide that they want to hold another set of open houses, or, or send a mailing to let people know about that comment period, or do nothing. It's really up to you at this point to kind of, are there some additional things you want to do to let residents know that this is happening?
I was only concerned, I'm on the east end, if Albear's and Riordan and all those folks have already been communicating, then that was my only concern, but I don't know about the west end folks, Wayne, they, they're satisfied with
Well, I don't think they're satisfied.
As far as communication and public
Yeah, I think communication.
Because they seem to, those were ones that they could attend in person already, I just didn't. I, I feel bad about when the COVID came, because so many people interact in person this, a lot of people don't have computers, or the internet isn't good enough, or what have you, that They, they kind of maybe felt robbed from the process, but it sounds like you displaced that, supplanted that by communicating directly.
I mean, we tried. I don't know. It's hard to know.
St. Regis folks, I guess, were there in person, so...
Yeah.
One side update, I'd been checking my phone for work reasons. Got an update that we couldn't find the quick answer to your 96, 97 question, but we'll follow up via email. So with, with you and kind of try to CC it as much of the group as we can, because that's a great question.
It was just a sidebar, because I remember, we all saw it. And then, so we knew what could really happen in a unique year.
And that's where I say I think there are probably some pictures available. Some documentation that way. I'm, I'm sure there weren't elevations taken by anybody.
Who's got the CFS figures from those days? What agency?
We do, we do have a hydrology report where they looked at, you know, wherever there were gauges to look at when those were, if those were replaced then. So that's all, I'll show you where that is if you want to just look at it.
Well, and that was part of it is we went to check it and the link looks like it's not working for the hydrology report, but that whole report is on that community webpage on our floodplain.gov.
Andy also has a copy of it, but...
So can you model what the CFS would be, say at the Two Rivers Gage, you know, Hundred Year Flood? Is there a way to model what that flow would be at that point?
Exactly, yeah.
Just right below the confluence with the St. Regis.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, that's the, that's like first steps. What is the flow?
And that comes from USGS mostly is the ones that are running a lot of those gauges.
Yeah, I can't remember the numbers now of how high they said the Clark Fork was in 97. I can't come up with the numbers.
Let's see if I can, I'll look that up right now on my phone. I'll try to.
Well, yeah. And sometimes I want to say that we did have a landowner with that and then it was like discharge and stage.
Yeah.
But just for, if you go to this project website, up at the top, at the top right corner, it says more info. And I think it, I don't know if the glasses on, I think it says maps and reports or something, maps and technical reports. All of that information should be, that, that should take you to another page and you can look that up there. So it gets pretty technical, but it's all there, so.
And the other thing too, when I talk about the St. Regis River coming into the Clark Fork, it backs it up some. Downstream through that, I've got that one hayfield and I notice the water, the elevations on my side in the summertime actually go lower than they used to because I think the channel's scoured out down there. And then you have to think about the St. Regis River when you have that scouring maybe up above, like by the Little River Motel, some of that's scoured out. And that probably actually added to the delta coming out into the Clark Fork River and backs it up even more. So, I mean, there is a little bit of a moving target just because of what happens to the river during the high water.
Yeah, we could really see what the bedload, how the bedload changed at the mouth of the St. Regis.
Yeah.
It was stark how much bedload went into the Clark Fork right there.
And that, and that I think, like I say, is what happens upstream. And like I say, downstream, I've noticed it on the Clark Fork, my irrigation doesn't get the water now in, in summer because the far side of the river's scoured out and is deeper. And that was downstream. Somewhere it loaded, it loaded it up downstream.
Somewhere.
But that's part of the problem there of the St. Regis River and the, and the railroad crossing, or railroad opening. It, it doesn't get a chance to scour out sometimes because the river backs it up and it actually builds up.
Shallows, shallows the depth of it, yeah.
Okay, that's pretty much all I had. Andy, do you have any other?
Yeah, so my biggest concern, and I've been talking with you guys through this whole thing, is we're, this is bad timing, I guess. It's like a, it's like a, maybe it's like a hard conversation. There's never a good time, you know, maybe. But like all other small communities, we're experiencing this massive...
Yeah.
I don't know, I don't even know what you'd call it, activity, right? It's just a massive amount of activity right now. So we're, we're constrained workload-wise, just issuing septic permits, reviewing floodplain, you know, reviewing subdivisions, on and on and on, that, you know, when this, when I got here, the capacity that we have is not what it was two years ago. So if there's any way that FEMA can extend this timeline, I mean, we're, you know, I don't, I kind of feel like a pandemic. There's extenuating circumstances here that they probably have never, none of us have dealt with before.
What do you mean the capacity's not the same?
Our, our capacity, my office's capacity to update floodplain regulations, track changes, just, just take a, go through this process, just the amount of workload that we're going to experience. It's just, it's just bad timing.
Because of the growth in the subdivision and the septic permit, now you've got a new federal map to kind of contend with.
At a time.
And updating our county, whatever she called it.
Right.
Adopting the regulations.
Yeah.
Andy, do you put the...
And this, Tracy, I mean, Andy, I can work with you. I mean, we can't make decisions for the community, but I can definitely help put regulations together to kind of help with your workload a little bit, if you'd like. That, that's not a problem. And we also really wanted to try to set up, I know originally we had talked about setting up some meetings with St. Regis as well as far as how to build and construct in these, in these areas, especially for non-residential structure. So, I mean, we, we could definitely help you with, with all of that and bring the folks in, especially, you know, the folks that have that expertise to, to provide that specific information on floodproofing for those non-residential structures. So it's just, you know, it's how much you want us to, to kind of help if you, you know, we'll be happy to provide that assistance to you.
Okay.
And I was wondering, Andy, but now do you just try to find an elevation and then give that to their surveyor and say, here's what, here's what you, you people have to use? Is that what you're doing now, or how, how are you coming up with it?
Yeah, so we, we use the best available information, right? And so most of the surveyors that work here are aware of what's going on. And so if people are, you know, Albear's is a good example where they're going to be in the floodplain. It's like, hey, here's the elevation. Have a surveyor set a monument. Then you know what two feet above this base flood elevation is, can you, you can work with.
And I'm thinking along the Slowway area too. You know, we've had a couple of those spots there. And so if you've got an elevation, you have given them and say, it's your responsibility to do what you're going to do.
You know, we don't have building permits, right?
Yeah.
So there's lots of scenarios where people are just building. And they just, you know, they'll come in for their septic permit later, you know, come in for their addressing later. So there's stuff that we, we don't even, you know, people, people aren't conscientious enough to look for that information. Yeah, so that happens as well.
One thing on the, on the flip side of that, and I, I know this timing is tough and we, typically after preliminary maps are produced, that process kind of moves forward in like six to nine months. You have the, the appeal period. We have kind of been sitting on this for quite a while to sort of just give you, give some time. So, so it has been delayed already a little bit. But I guess one thing, like we've been working with Beaverhead County and they're, they're not quite in the same situation as you, but they're definitely really busy and a very small staff. And so one of the things they're looking at is that having updated maps, where people aren't having to find these paper maps or whatever, when somebody's purchasing a property, like even from out of the area and the Realtor's looking at, once the maps go into effect, they become part of FEMA's, the, it's called the National Flood Hazard Layer. And any Realtor is supposed to be going on to there to look at that. That's one of the things they, they look at is in the floodplain or not. It's a lot easier for people to look at that when you have updated maps. It's hard, harder right now. So I guess that's one, one thing that might lessen your workload is that, I don't know, you may have people more readily able to access the information than having to call your office. I don't know. That's, Beaverhead County has been pushing us that we just need these maps to replace our old ones because our old ones are so bad. So...
Yeah, yeah, it's a little bit of both, right? It's, it's like, you, yeah, you, you think it would help and it will never help, right?
Right, yeah.
So there's, there's two, yeah.
Right.
Build and run your water.
You guys hosting the website's actually super helpful.
Okay. I mean, what else could we, short of delaying, like what, are there other things that DNRC could do to, to help?
Yeah, I think, yeah, I think help with drafting the regulations.
Okay.
Because it, Tracy, you might chime in here, the, the difficult part, right, is listing all those changes, the LOMAs, the...
Lomars.
Yeah, all the elevation, I, I, that, that's the, you know, cranking out a draft of regulations is pretty straightforward. It's just, it's documenting all the changes that have taken place and what's, what, what's no longer valid, what is. So just, yeah, some technical support there with the regulation change. And then, and then, you know, help with like, you know, like how other counties have tracked this? You know, like what were their best practices of tracking it? You know, I'm just thinking of a spreadsheet that I create.
Oh, like for people submitting comments or appeals? Yeah, yeah, we can do that. I mean, I, I don't know. Beaverhead, I'll just, Beaverhead County's not, it's just the one that's most recent in my memory here, but they only had a handful of, of comments that came in. So, so, you know, Gallatin County had a lot, but that's a little different. So it just kind of depends.
So sidebar question, you talked about Beaverhead County, a county that's similar to us in terms of size. And they have the Clark Fork homes along that river and the Rock Creek. How is Granite County faring with all their homes along those waterways?
So they are, so they, what happened a number of years ago, their maps got just converted into digital and they did just a couple of studies on a couple of things, just on Flint Creek and, and I forget. So, so basically they went through this process, but a much smaller process, a number of years ago. So they're digital already, which is nice, but...
So if you go to the National Flood Hazard Layer, you can zoom in on Granite County and get that in.
Some of the information on there is kind of old, unfortunately.
Oh, you're looking at digitized approximate data.
Yeah, they digitize. So we digitized some of their proximity. So however, right now we are doing an update, a new study along the Clark Fork River from, basically from you guys, all the way through Missoula County and Granite County to basically, to update that. And that'll include also part of Rock Creek. So they will get updated information in a couple of years on, on the Clark Fork and Rock Creek. So they're, they will be doing this again. So they're similar to, but yeah. But we've been working with Linda over there, the planner, and their commissioners.
While we're doing sidebars, I did pull up the, the 97 event. It is the biggest on, on record. And at the gate, on the Clark Fork, it was 70,000 CFS, which is a ton. And I don't know if you can tell exactly how much of that came from the St. Regis versus the Clark Fork, because it's just below the confluence, but it sounds like a lot of it was on the St. Regis, huh? Yeah.
Well, then the next marker up, I don't know where that measurement is, like by Frenchtown, but I wonder what the difference between those two might be just...
Yeah, that kind of...
I know a lot of the tributaries run in between there, but kind of a, is it half that or is it three quarters that?
Yeah, yeah, I think it could be. I'll, I'll follow up with you.
Yeah, the Regis at some point has a gauging station because you can pull them up.
Yeah.
Hey Doug, I did find the information on the, the St. Regis River.
Cool. What'd you find out?
It's the Clark Fork River at St. Regis, it was the highest, the 97 was the maximum peak discharge here.
Right. Yeah, I don't know if there's a, I'm going to see if I can find the St. Regis gauge, but that's just because I'm a nerd.
Oh, that, there's a...
Just only on the St. Regis?
Yeah, is there a gauge right on the St. Regis? I don't know.
You can pull up the...
Yes, yeah, here's one.
Mapping, yeah.
I'm on it.
It's on, it's got to be, I don't know exactly.
Go on with the, the good meeting stuff. I'll see if I can find this nerdy stuff.
Okay, well, so we will commit to trying to work with Andy to kind of make your workload as less, as light as possible, I guess, in this. But I guess any, anything else to try to, or to comment here as we start to move forward?
That, that gauge only started in 2002, unfortunately.
Ah.
That's too bad.
Well, 2011 was a big flood year.
And I remember 2018, May of 2018.
Yeah. Which...
The biggest on memory, right, is 20s.
I think I remember looking at pictures from, yes.
I think the 11 flood is what broke the Milltown down.
48 or something like that.
Yeah, there's quite a few.
One of them washed off the Higgin Street Bridge.
The 40s one, or maybe it was in the 50s, one that was really big up in the Flathead, I'm sure that was big down. I guess it was big down. Yeah, but I guess that's below us here, so.
Can we pull up the St. Regis map again for underlook?
Sure. Or do you want me to just get, I can go right to the viewer, but maybe we'll just do this. This is just on a slide since it's handy.
Well, we're grateful for the extra time. Don't hesitate to leave us out if you need to.
We're happy you guys may be driving.
Yeah, no problem.
Okay, one point that Mike Day and his folks made about their studies is that the freeway bridges, the on and off ramp bridges and the Mullen Road Bridge, all were other issues. That the way they were constructed, they didn't allow for floodplain activity, you know? Didn't allow for the stream to spread out where it normally wants to spread out. And so there's, there's going to be some issues with those highway structures.
Regardless of the Raro Bridge, like Danley said, if you tunnel under, make some little culverts for water to go through, it's really not going to help in the big scheme because these other bridges are still too narrow to do anything with.
Well, even the, the one across the St. Regis on, on the old highway is low. That's almost like a dyke if you get in the Hundred Year Flood.
Yeah, 97 was left in the bottom of the bridge.
Where, did you say?
It's, it's the, crosses the St. Regis River on the old highway.
Okay.
Eastern, forward style.
Right next to the grocery store.
I think I remember that. Yeah, and the old dyke that, okay, yeah.
It's so low that it's like, it would, yeah, it would stop the water, the water could go around there.
I think there's some, yeah, it's built to the 50-year, I think, is what it is. But, but something Tiv mentioned, just in, in terms of like mitigation assessments that might be coming, yeah, work on the railroad is only one option. So looking just like Mike Day suggested, there's, there's, you know, we haven't had a close look at it. It would take a little bit of sitting down and tinkering, but...
And there are so many structures over that.
Right, it's very complex.
On ramps, yeah.
Yeah. And so there's potential, I suppose.
And when you have, they have the pillars in the middle. If, if you have any of those in water, what happens is you get the buildup below the, any kind of footing that's in the water, you get build up and then you get the trees and different things starting in that too. So you have actually a backup. And that's kind of what Glenn is saying as far as the main freeway bridges have, they aren't made to let all water go completely through.
Right.
Free.
No, I'm glad you brought that up. That's definitely a...
There was a lot of trouble with debris, trees, and Danley and his people got to fish a lot of wood out of the river because it was up against the bridge, appears.
Yeah, the one ended up, the eastbound on-ramp actually, it backed up, it undermined it and the, and the bridge dropped about that.
Yeah.
Couldn't you help build that bridge? What'd you do wrong?
The High Bridge.
Well, one of the High Bridges looks like it's settled too.
It looks to me like the ends.
Something dipped out in there.
Well... Well, the good news is there isn't much you need to do except for collecting the comments and appeals that come in and unless you want to do any more outreach, but, you know, we can do all of that stuff if that would be to help.
And you folks sort out the...
Yes?
You sort out the comments from emotion and fact?
Yeah, so FEMA will go through all of them, but really you can't change a map unless there is some technical information to replace technical information. So, you know, some, if you say it's never flooded here before, that's, that's information, but there's not a lot we can really change with that. So, yeah. But, but they'll all get looked at.
And I guess the, just to touch on it, the, the other way forward, so to speak, would be these maps go effective and then you, and then if you do a mitigation effort, then there's a, you change just the area that's affected through, through a similar process. It's much faster, frankly.
Yeah.
So that's...
You would revise that area.
Right, right, so that's how that would roll out. So you would be trying to get that in in the appeal period, obviously, but that's pretty common, actually.
Anything else?
All right, well, thank you.
Well, thank you for your time.
Thank you all so much. And don't hesitate to get in touch.
Okay.
With more questions.
Very good, okay.
License plates, and we made a recommendation, Transportation Committee, to the governor to change that five-year renewal. They, they figured they had enough aluminum, there's aluminum shortage, and that's why the license plates are coming out in either cardboard or plastic, or they're trying to, yeah, if you're supposed to replace every five years.
Those plastic ones couldn't radar, bounce off of them?
Anyway, and I, I made the comment, I said, you know, Western Montana or Eastern Montana, you have a trailer and you back up to that plastic license plate, it's not going to stand up to more than one boat.
Yeah.
But, so we made a request to the governor's office to extend that five-year renewal for another year at least and see what happens with aluminum. But here's, the problem is that it's in law, so...
Had to have the legislature convene?
He has to, well, he can do a state of emergency. And the state of emergency, and, and this is, I just texted his chief of staff this morning, I said, you know, they can pull the legislature and, because the state of emergency lasts now for 45 days instead of forever, like it was. So if they pull the legislature, and I'm sure the legislature would, would let, would allow him to do that, but it's just a little bit of a time, time crunch on it. So I'm not sure what's going to happen, but, but he does have, he got that request officially a couple of weeks ago and they're just trying to decide legally.
Laurie Dwayne probably don't know that I emailed you, Danley, but what he's talking about is that if you guys go up in the treasurer's office, the license plates currently being issued to people with new vehicles are this flimsy little, it's not paper, not cardboard, but it, like some guy designed in the basement of his house on his computer. It, it's the silliest thing I've ever seen. Conversely then, furthermore, I always thought it was silly that they were making us take our license plates and change them in every five, six years, when what's the, the plate just is readable and good, isn't it? And so now we have an aluminum shortage, so they're making everybody change their plate in. Well, duh, now we've got this flimsy paper thing that somebody can design.
They, they thought they had enough aluminum for probably move, new issue, but the renewal puts more pressure on that. And so that's what, these would come out as the renewal, and maybe even new eventually.
I did say it was hard to read. On the hard control, we never had any difficulty, nobody complained about it, because you could still read them. Plus, we have permanent plates that are permanent forever.
Yeah.
Plus, the average person doesn't run their, you know, they're trading their car in after 10 years or selling it or wrecking it. Why, why do we have to waste aluminum for somebody's, that's what I wondered, it always seems like, follow the money. Because there's somebody in government whose son owned an aluminum plant?
There were some highway patrolmen that did say you can't read them well and, and, you know...
Well, if they're worried about reading them, what they got to do is make these license plates not be 155 different varieties.
Right, yeah.
And I, and I hear that comment, they say it's easier to, easier to identify all the out-of-staters, you know, they memorize those. And then if it's, if it's not an out-of-state, okay, this is our in-state, this is the plate. But, yeah, you can't, and you have no idea what county or any of them. But anyway, so that's the background into that question, and it, it may come, it may not come.
So while it's in law that they have to convene to change...
Well, it can be pulled, it can be sent out.
But is it not in law, though, that they have to be aluminum plates? I mean, where's that law? Why, why are they aluminum to begin with? I mean, why, why can they just change it on their own?
Probably could be steel, that I can't...
But not paper? Who would think of paper?
Well, it must, it must fit the bill.
Not like the paper...
That part I can't...
That's what I'm saying, is it, oh, we have to convene the legislature to change it from five years to seven? Well, what about pulling, convening the legislature, say, hey, we're going to issue a paper license plate from aluminum?
That must not be on, on the, on the books that way. And maybe that's just a...
So now what's happening is that people have personalized plates, they're getting someone to come in and get their new, they're getting a sticker, they're just throwing it away and they're keeping their personalized plate, just putting the sticker on the personalized plate. They don't want to put the sticker on a paper one.
And there's, anyway, there's, there's a lot of problem. And that's why I say we talked about it, but it, officially, nothing has come out yet. I just double-checked that this morning, so.
Yeah, well, do, one, your double-checks, I would be curious to know the history of, did one highway patrolman get the state to just do this? I mean, it's a silly recycling program that's not working.
It comes up in discussion and...
Yeah.
Well, I was told once when I got, when I had a review, that after five years, the reflectiveness, the reflectorized nature is diminished.
That's what they tell you.
And that was the discussion, and...
I don't buy it.
I don't either.
Nobody convinced enough people.
No.
We go back to steel.
Well, thanks for checking into it. I hope I don't have to get a paper license plate because they're just, they're too easy to rip off, they're too easy for people to home-make them, they're just not...
Like I say, for me, on a, on a pickup, just will not even put it on.
Right.
Well, it's not like the paper hunting licenses. They just integrate and they get wet at all.
Well, and that's supposed to, that's supposed to change, that was a, until they get their system changed over.
And if there's an aluminum shortage, can I take my cans in now and get more than 30 cents a pound for them?
Might have to take them on an offshore container.
Funny how that stuff never trickles down to the...
Yeah.
Any...
Any other public comment from the public?
Just wanted to report, a couple of weeks ago, some of us had a get-together with Glacier Country Tourism in St. Regis. I don't think I've been here since then to report on that. But they have like a new initiative, says we're shifting our focus, there's a new program called Destination Stewardship, which is to engage more with the local communities and small businesses in the Glacier Country region, because Glacier Park is overwhelmed. And they're trying to disperse the traveling pressure, I guess, the visitor pressure, further out into the outlying areas. And with the COVID thing, the national forests were kind of overwhelmed with campers and people fleeing the cities and whatnot, or being homeless, or combinations of things. And so the Forest Service has kind of maxed out with their ability to absorb people at all these dispersed sites. And so the small towns and chambers of commerce and, and other businesses need to work together more, I think. And try to get people spread around better during those peak seasons.
Part of that too is the railroad doesn't work with anyone. And this summer, they went downstairs and enforcing tickets and towing cars on all of those campsites and fishing, little fishing yards.
They're on their right-of-way and their fire roads and...
Well, they're not on there, you just have to cross.
Oh, right.
And they don't want you crossing, so they shut them all down. So now that takes out how many miles of the Clark Fork from people accessing it for fishing?
And you do look on, on the hunting regulations and it says railroad property, you're trespassing to, to hunt and walk down the railroad too, that's...
To walk down it, but if you're just crossing, and there's a road there, crossing it, but yet they're saying you can't.
And they have, keep pretty good control of their crossing.
It's like a total access.
But, but part of that, the idea of what Glenn is saying is they want community involvement to say, okay, is, is the community satisfied that there's enough tourism in certain locations? Do we want to try and shuffle that off? Do we want to protect some things? Do we want it, I mean, that's, the whole idea is to coordinate with the communities too. If enough is enough, what should they, what should the Forest Service, to put some pressure maybe on the Forest Service, maybe we have to close off the road to Diamond Lake half a mile sooner to ease that pressure. It, it all kind of goes together, is, is enough enough or do we need more? You know, and it's a tourism, they're pushing the tourism and they're saying Glacier Park is about maxed out, so...
It's filled with Yellowstone.
What should we, what should we advertise locally that we want to happen?
Open some more gates and...
Let them disperse.
Let them disperse.
And that's, and that's part of what Glacier Country is getting at, is where, where do the locals kind of want the recreation to happen even for the tourists?
And where don't they want it to happen for the tourists?
You know, and even closing the roads, I mean, we look at, I look at going up Ward Creek now, those lakes, Hazel and Hub, used to be you're up there alone, and now it's a three-mile hike and you're still, it's like, almost like a town at times. And, you know, to me, I kind of, I hate to say it, but I kind of quit going when I get, if I see more than five people, I'm probably going to get back. Till it's inclement weather.
Yeah, that's been everywhere has been, like, just every nook and cranny has...
But that's what Glacier Country has been going around.
All right, can I get anything from you?
No.
No?
Just listening to the maps and... Yeah, the Glacier Country, we've noticed that, that it's just every nook and cranny, the traffic on the river, where it was busy, we saw two other boats. And now you're seeing 10, 15, the floaters, the, all the rafts, it's just...
And, and it'll come, you know, the other rivers have started putting some restrictions on it, we're going to see that.
What we'd like to see restrictions on is motorized boats. Because now that we're getting more floaters and more drift boats, the motorized boats are, I mean, they're dangerous.
It's not compatible.
They're not compatible, they come around a corner and, you know, there's some floaters or a drift boat there and it's like, we've had to like, whoa.
And as a request FWP, they could put a group together like they did in the, or the Bitter Run. They didn't like what took them.
Yeah, well, they've done it on parts of the Clark Forks or Missoula, but they're just pushing everything.
All right, well, we'll be back here then at 1 o'clock for a bid opening. We're here for 1 o'clock, a bid opening. 1 o'clock bid opening award on the Cedar Creek Road reconstruction.
Yeah, we've got two bids. Couldn't get ahold of Nate, he must be off hunting, huh?
Uh, he called me yesterday and said no engineers could come and ask if I could stop over and I was...
Yeah, I've been trying to get ahold of him to get a estimate, engineering estimate.
Should we still work from home?
Yeah, I think he was going Eastern Montana, but I'm not sure exactly when.
So the first bid's going to be from Meadow Creek Contracting. And the bid price is going to be 178,591 dollars and 49 cents. The second bid's going to be Haskins Escavating. For a total bid price of 73,713 dollars. So I'm going to have to, I think before we award this, I wish I could get ahold of Nate, because he didn't get me the engineering estimate this time, so I'm not, I don't have a clue where they were at. That's a long ways, that's 100 and...
Big difference, yeah.
105,000 dollar difference, I'm, I'm wondering if there's not a...
Somebody mixing apples with oranges on there, I understand.
Let me look at this for a second.
I know, because sometimes when he's at home, he can send a text, but he can't get it, make phone calls.
And if he's hunting, he might not have any service.
I don't think he's hunting.
Or one.
I talked to Frawley this morning, I asked him if he would get me the engineering estimate.
You knew that Mike's dad passed away?
Oh, I know, I made this.
Really?
Oh, Dennis?
It was on Michael, Mike's off work.
Oh, I didn't know that, that's too bad.
Or he would have been over here today.
Right, yeah.
How much time do we got?
We've got all afternoon.
Nothing else going on.
Oh, okay.
We've got about 11 seconds.
Well, I'll tell you, the difference, the funny, the, the difference in the price is $1,990 basically, and it's gabion baskets, and there's a $100,000 difference, so... Are you trying to call it?
We're getting more texts, so I was just...
We wouldn't take that either. How many baskets are there calling for?
Uh, just calling for 294. And the price, the price difference is, you know, basically, one's got $127 per basket, one's got $471 per basket.
Somebody has a direct line to China.
And, you know, that's, it could be all it is, but that's a big...
There you, you said China, so the one that gave you baskets, when China are made out of plastic, the other ones are made out of...
I would think that Darren has done enough of this, that he would understand, that he would understand it. So maybe, maybe we will, I guess, my thought process would be, both these guys have done all these projects, you know, they talked directly with Nate about questions with what's going on. I would feel like they would both be way confident, understanding what, what's going on here, you know? And maybe there is just a price difference, but I would say we, my recommendation would be accept Haskins Escavating's bid pending Nate's approval, I guess.
So accept it contingent upon Nate's approval from the Forest Service.
Okay. And I'll try to get ahold of you, it might be, maybe Monday or something, I might have to call you guys and, you know, once I get ahold of him, so...
What are they doing this time?
Uh, it's just going to be a road reconstruct up Cedar Creek, and we've got two more project, projects coming down the line, two big ones. We've got a Fish Creek project reconstruct coming up there, and then Little Joe gravel the whole way, which is, you know, that's a big one.
Yeah, and that one will probably go out to...
Probably somebody bigger.
Because they've got to crush the gravel and, so it'll probably be a bigger company to do the, because I think there's like a bridge and culvert, I mean, big culverts and...
It's tied in with that, the whole Red Bull project, fisheries.
What's the length of this current one we're looking at, for that many baskets and stuff?
I don't know, I don't know where the, I don't even know where all the project is, to be honest with you.
It's from Cayuse to Rabbit Creek, I think.
I think so.
Because it's gravel from Rabbit Creek to Charlie Miller Saddle and then from Cayuse down when the Crowder Unlimited redid the road there, it's gravel from there, so it's from, be Cayuse to Rabbit Creek, I think.
I think that's what Nate told me.
Are they doing anything on that sheet piece that is sloughing?
Sheet piece.
No. You know, where you come up out of the, yeah.
Cayuse to Rabbit's a pretty, that's pretty...
Yeah, and that's pretty, I mean, they, they did some gabion baskets years ago in, in places, but there's other places that need it.
Yeah, some of that's sloughing pretty badly.
And I think that's where some of these gabions are identified for and to get that shoulder...
Ain't much else you could do with it, is it?
Yeah, to get that shoulder width back out there. Nate doesn't pick up either way with a text or a call, so...
Yeah, he's probably gone, but that's okay, we can, we can approve this pending on his approval. And once he, once he is okay with it, then I'll just call you guys and let you know and then we'll, and I'll, I'll hold off on talking to these guys until I...
I would think Haskins has done enough of that type of work, though, that...
That's what I'm saying, it's all... That's what I'm saying is, it's all, and it's all in one line item. It's all in one line item. The price difference is all one line item here, so. I'm just going to do the math real quick. That's what it is. So like I said, we'll just approve that pending Nate's approval.
Sounds good.
So, so we have a motion for that?
Um, the motion that we accept Haskins Escavating bid, uh, was it?
Seventy-three.
Seventy-three thousand, seven, seven hundred and thirteen dollars, um, with the, with Nate's approval on the, the cost.
I would say that.
Okay. A motion to go ahead with it, contingent upon Nate's approval. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, okay.
And Nate's over at the big house now.
Hmm?
Nate's over at the big house now.
Deer Lodge?
The RO.
Yeah.
The RO.
He's at the regional office.
Oh, that big house.
Yeah.
Still working out of his home, but I mean, he's a regional office employee now.
He's in charge of Washington, or I mean, Montana, Idaho and North Dakota?
Yeah, that's everything for the region.
Who's take, who took his job? Let me know.
Uh, tentatively Brian Story.
Right.
Oh, good.
How about your office? What's going on over there?
We are just, uh, people are still finishing up burning some, some landing piles. Uh, it's time to finish up some project work before they get snowed out. One of the things that you might hear a little bit of discussion on is, um, and people have been really good, but I think disappointed that we've, we've had a marking crew working up behind the Coal Creek gate, uh, preparing those marking and doing some cruising on those sails that would come out of Red Bull. And, uh, that was, part of that has been our own, uh, forest account, crew people, and some of it is contract people out of, I think they're out of New Mexico or wherever, trying to finish that before they get as much as they can, before they get snowed out. So the contractors, they work seven days a week from daylight to dark in there. And, and I know the Coal Creek area is an important area for local people to hunt. And so I haven't really had too much comment, but I know there's been people disappointed, but I, being a, an IDIQ contract, I can say, well, you can't work the week of Thanksgiving, you can't work on weekends. I, I didn't have control of that, so.
Haven't heard any complaints about it, but-
I haven't had really any calls, but I know there's people have asked me about it. Devon Hill has been one that talked to, I think Lori Carter. Certainly wasn't, um, angry or anything like that, but, you know, would have liked to have hunted in there. So if you do hear comments, that's what it is. Not to my liking particularly either, but, um, you know, if you're going to get that work done, you gotta get it done. When you can, so. And I do know that Coal Creek is a area that gets quite a bit of hunting pressure and so, unfortunately, for local people.
All right, well, thanks.
Okay.
Yeah.
And I did receive the letters. I got copies of the letters this week from, uh, you guys had signed. And I'll make sure, uh, I'll scan those and make sure Carolyn gets copies of them. I think she enjoyed her day, uh, out here, even though the weather was horrible. Uh, you know, getting out in the county and-
We're a pretty sorry looking bunch in that picture in the paper, aren't we? Everybody kind of looks like, what the hell are we doing here?
Carol, did I, did I pen that letter too? For lack of a better word, smart assy, or was it, uh? I was trying to get the point across about being a, a, a butt head about it, but-
Yeah, no, I thought, I read, I read and I thought, uh, you know, you got your point across, which is what you needed to do.
Yeah.
As to why the county is requesting it.
Right. Okay, good. I wanted somebody in Washington DC who's, you know, yawning and humdrum to at least take a little bit of note of it, not just, so I wanted my point to get across. Thank you.
Yeah, no, no, I think did. I, I don't think it was offensive.
All right.
Or should be taken that way.
So, I don't know, did I talk to you about that motorhome on Camel Sump? Have you heard anything about that, that burned out motorhome?
Um, not of recent, no.
So it was sitting at Vince Triplet's Body Shop there on Mill Creek.
For a while, quite a while.
Jimmy Harris and his girlfriend, I guess, about a year ago, lived in it and caught off fire. Uh, Vince's kid's running that now and he finally told him to get it out of there. Whoever hooked onto it had a four wheeled dolly and they got up as far as where that road goes back into Sharon Rogers's piece of property.
Oh, down in there on the bottom.
They lost a wheel right there. And so you could see they'd struggled with it and jacked it up and gotten the wheel off. And they left a note on there, left their phone number and said, please don't tow. And so I thought, well, I'll give them a few days, you know, and I gave them a few days and I called them. And I got the guy and he said, oh, don't, don't do nothing with it. I'm headed there right now. Well, he, he'd brought a trailer the second time and he put it on a trailer, got most of it up on the trailer. And they made it as far as the top of the hill, right where the road goes up to Camel Sump, right out that little loop that goes around.
Yeah.
Yeah, it's sitting right there, blocking that little loop.
I seen that this morning.
Yeah.
No, I, I didn't-
So I ran into the, to the law enforcement guy up there and I think maybe the sheriff had, the undersheriff had said something to him. And I ran into him up there when he was looking at the, all that was sitting there then was the dolly. And the other piece was up there on top of the hill. And he said, well, legally I have to give them five days, but it's been over five days. And I called him yesterday and left a message. I didn't get him personally. And I called him and left a message and, uh, I don't know what will happen with it. But my fear is they've got, somebody's stuffed a bunch of dead lodge pole tops in the burned out part, like maybe they're figuring on burning the rest of it.
Torch in the rest.
I hope that, but you know, they've got their name, they've got the license on it. I still got a piece of paper that's got the gal's name on it, that wrote the note there to begin with, that it belongs to apparently.
Where would they be taking it though?
Uh, I guess her new boyfriend is, lives in that-
See you later.
Compound there at the end of, uh, the old frontage road there at DeBorgia.
Oh, yeah.
That, you wonder what's going on back there all the time, every time you drive by. I guess he was towing it to there.
Oh, great.
But he ain't never made it. And that's been, I know that's been two weeks now that that's sat there on top.
That's not going to be safe to tow on the freeway.
No. No. He's got the worst part of it up on the trailer. Got the back wheels just following the trailer, you know, so maybe it would stick together. I, I don't- I don't have any idea what he's, and maybe the law enforcement guy talked to him. I don't have any idea. I haven't talked to him since.
I'll, I'll find out about it. Wasn't aware of that one.
Yeah, I just don't want to see him. I'm afraid somebody will torch it and then there'll just be a frame sitting there. And then what are you going to do with it?
Abandoned vehicles since last year has been a huge issue. Huge issue.
And it would be different if it was just an abandoned vehicle that you could grab ahold of and get the heck out of there. But you're going to have to have a trailer or something to pull it up on, because it's, I mean, it ain't far from just falling right.
Well, and then, you know, the process that we have with an abandoned vehicle, you'd think you could just take them to the junkyard and get rid of them.
You can't.
You can't. You gotta impound them for X number of days and wait to see if anybody-
Surfaces.
Surfaces.
As an owner.
Supposedly it's got to be all fenced in and secured. And my argument with law enforcement is, well, it isn't secured where it's sitting.
Right.
Why do we have to put it in a secure spot? Anyway, and then the time you get it towed and you get it wherever you gotta go, pretty soon you got a chunk of change in the thing.
Well, and I think that's what scared him the first time, is I told the guy on the phone, I said, you know, I don't know that much about this, but I know you're not leaving it set there. And if you do, it's going to get towed and it's going to be assessed to you, you know? And I, I said, I do assume anyway. I didn't say I do for a fact. And he said, I'll be right down. And he, he phone was breaking up and then it was moved, but that's far as they made it, you know?
Yeah, that's always been a problem with abandoned cars, with all the rights that they have, even though they left them there, like you say.
Wheels and, I mean, everything stripped off of them or, or somebody stripped them. If they're there very long and, yeah, you end up with several hundred dollars in them by the time you get them disposed of.
Yeah.
Time you haul them to wherever, you gotta impound them and then if nobody claims them, which ninety-nine percent of the time, nobody does. So then you gotta haul them again and then pay to get rid of the things.
Unless she's got a different piece of paper. I got the note that she wrote there that just belongs to me. There is a license plate number on it, a Washington license plate, so.
Okay, well, hang on to that then, Dwayne, so. But-
And I took a picture of it and sent it to the law enforcement guy too, so.
Okay. Abandoned vehicles, boy, that's been a huge issue. Talking to Jen Handsek, the ranger at, uh, Missoula District, they've dealt with a number of them as well in there, so.
Yeah, whenever you think you got it back, somebody's always got it worse. Can you imagine dealing with the problems of around Missoula County, talking about campgrounds and, and, oh, when I was younger, that Christ Pond used to be a nice little place to go. And now, well, I saw one of the Christ brothers and-
That's a night, that's been a nightmare spot.
And I said, hey, have you been to your, to your namesake pond lately, Christ? He goes, oh, you mean, you mean the meth, the meth lab lake? I said, I wish they'd change the name of that. It's an embarrassment to my family. Yeah, it's terrible up there now.
It is. Little Joe Campground, uh, for us, right out of St. Regis. And my hope is when we get through with Red Bull, that we can do some improvements in there and start, uh, charging a fee just to hopefully help get rid of some of the people that are not recreating public that's using that. Because with some of the clientele that are parking in there now, we're always trying to get them moved out of there. And families that want to go there and have a cookout for supper or whatever, don't feel uh, like taking a family in there because of whose camp next door.
Yeah.
So.
And the crap that they leave.
And then the same thing. We're constantly cleaning up messes in there.
Yeah.
A real problem. Okay, well, I guess I probably should put a, a date on for December, Lori. I don't know that-
When will Red Bull sell then?
No, they're just, they're just, I think just starting to look at it with US Fish and Wildlife Service, uh, Dwayne. And so I don't know how long it'll take to get through that.
How many sales will it come out to, do you think?
A total?
Total numbers, different sales.
Oh, there's, uh, ten or twelve.
Yeah.
In that Red Bull analysis.
Okay, we've got the third, tenth, seventeenth, and then we'll probably meet the twenty-third, that Thursday, the twenty-third and the thirtieth, because Friday is the date, or a holiday, the twenty-fourth and the thirty-first are holidays, so. So probably meet on the Thursday before.
Okay.
Would the seventeenth work? Yep, Lori.
I can put you in there. I'll put you at nine and then move.
Okay.
Move talk down an hour.
Nine o'clock.
If that will work.
Seventeenth. Nine o'clock. Okay, thank you.
All right, thank you.
Thanks, Carol.
Yeah, I'll look into that on the, that motorhome and then try to find out what they have did with one of their, at the end of the pay, Lori.
All right. All right, thank you.
Have a good weekend.